Somewhere. Maybe here. 9:00 AM, I should say. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners to order on July 27, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much for joining our meeting today. If you want to participate in citizen input, you know that you have to have filled out a blue sheet and turned it in, so that can come up here to the front. And we do have comments. Mike McCarter, would you like to? You do have three minutes. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike McCarter, and I'm the President of Move Oregon's Border in Greater Idaho. In December of 2019, a group of rural Oregonian citizen, Oregon citizens, put together a grassroots movement called Move Oregon's Border. They felt Oregon's leadership and the majority of Oregonians in Portland and the Willamette Valley has and is ignoring the values of citizens in rural Oregon. Move Oregon's Border and now Greater Idaho is not a political movement. It is a movement focused on faith, family, freedom, independence, and self-sufficiency. These are the values that are important to those Oregonians who live in rural Oregon. We don't want to be controlled by the demands of the Willamette Valley. The cultural divide between Western and Eastern Oregon has been growing for many years. Eastern Oregonians have lost faith in Oregon's leadership and don't trust the direction that Oregon is going. So we started the lawful way of bringing our voice to Oregon's leadership through the petition ballot measure process in 19 full counties and three partial counties. To date, nine eastern Oregon counties have voted in favor of Greater Idaho initiatives, with the last seven counties voting 62% in favor of them. Note, these measures do not vote to move Oregon counties to Idaho. They ask to open up the discussion about the sources and solutions why Oregonians are discontented, rural Oregonians are discontented with Oregon's treatment of these counties. We have representation, but when our representation brings up issues that are important to rural Oregonians, they are ignored or outvoted by the demands of the Willamette Valley. This movement didn't want to focus, force counties whose citizens weren't in favor of looking into the possibility of moving to Idaho, only to become part of the process. In May of this year, two counties in southwest Oregon voted against looking into Greater Idaho. This measure in Josephine County lost by a little over 1% and in Douglas County by a little over 2%. In November of this year, Morrel County citizens will be voting on Greater Idaho issues and Willawa County in May of 2023. Wheeler County Commissioners are deciding whether to put the measure on November's ballot as an advisory question next week. What is the next step? We are talking across the state with Oregon legislators to bring the discussion into the Oregon Legislature. In January of this year, over 80% of the citizens in northwest Oregon on a poll said it should be discussed in the Oregon Legislature. State Representatives in Idaho have prepared a memorial asking Oregon's legislature to begin, to begin discussions. This memorial should be voted on in their upcoming legislative session. Oregon Senator Lintecum is looking at presenting similar action in Oregon's legislative session that's coming up. How does it affect Deschutes County? It really doesn't for the most part. Our proposed Oregon-Itoho border includes Redmond and the Lepine communities, but not Bend per se. Now, however, should the process get to the point of looking at the official borderlines, it would be decided by the two legislatures.
Mike, you have gone over your three minutes.
Yep. Thank you for your time. I just finished.
Okay, good. Perfect timing. And you're submitting, you're submitting some testimony then? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this morning.
I guess I would just say that I think that splitting Deschutes County into has pretty significant impacts for the county. And one other thing I'd like to say is that we have just seen a citizen effort to reduce partisan division in Deschutes County, go through the signature collection process, the nonpartisan county commissioner ballot measure. That will likely be on the, on the ballot this November. And I would encourage you, if you want the citizens of Deschutes County, to consider Greater Idaho to undertake a similar process, to go ahead and start gathering signatures to get it on the ballot, so that the voters of Deschutes County can weigh in on this issue.
Thank you, Mike. I believe we have Carl Fundling? I'm sorry for not quite reading your name. Finley?
Finley, yep, for the record.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioners Chang, Adair, and Debone. For the record, my name is Carl J. Finley. I'm a 33-year resident of Deschutes County and live in Tomalo. The purpose of this letter is to provide comments and express concerns relating to Goal Five and the lack of progress toward completion of the Updates of Wildlife Inventory Maps. I first addressed the Deschutes County Commission in August of 2019 as the Lands Conservation Director for a 10,000-member Oregon Hunters Association. I sat alongside Ms. Linford from Protect Animal Migration here in Bend, a nonprofit, addressing the County Commission, County Community Development Department on amendments to the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Two, a separate issue but still affecting our county's mule deer. Since that time, even more development in migration and no movement toward updating a 30-year-old plan has occurred regarding Goal Five and specifically inventory maps that will directly affect mule deer. Most Deschutes County residents actually live in mule deer winter range. Also correspondingly, since August 19, 2019 testimony, mule deer have continued to decline. I'm a life member for a number of conservation organizations that work closely with public agencies to further their goals and put more dollars on the ground for wildlife, their habitat, and educate the public as to the needs of wildlife in our quickly growing suburbs. Please direct staff to complete the component, vital component of the Oregon land use planning process. Thanks for the work on behalf of the people of Deschutes County and your time this morning. Any questions?
Thank you.
You can further contact me and submit my written information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think, didn't you just send an email perhaps?
I have a hard copy.
Okay.
Can I do the email?
Yes, thank you so much. And the last person that has signed up is Michael Casey.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Casey, and for my day job, I work for the Theodore Roosevelt Conservation Partnership, which is a national nonprofit supporting hunting, angling, and quality opportunities to hunt and fish across the nation. And so I represent Oregon and the Pacific Northwest for them. But today, I'm just here to talk about wildlife inventory and the overlays you guys are working on as a citizen of Deschutes County. Lived here about 10 years, and both the properties that I've lived in are in the wildlife combining zone. And, you know, I think, as Carl just mentioned, we've seen a massive decline in mule deer in Deschutes County and really throughout the West over the past 15 to 20 years. And a lot of that is, is predicated on suburban development and sprawl, moving out from these urban areas in the western United States. And one of the reasons I live in the wildlife combining overlay is because I really enjoy hunting, angling, wildlife watching, all of these activities that come with these sort of rural living lifestyles. So I really just wanted to applaud the Commission for taking on that grant from DLCD to look at the idea of doing these wildlife inventory overlays, putting in the work from the Planning Commission and the staff, and then identifying the opportunity to move forward with the mule deer plan inventory update. When you look at those maps, you see that area between Bend and Sisters as a place that, you know, in my opinion, it really should have been part of the mule deer. Most of Deschutes County is winter range, especially down beyond, below the Cascades. And so the zones that are looking at expansion of the mule deer overlay really make a lot of sense from a biological perspective. And I look forward to having public input. I just got an email from the county about some summer updates, and within that, there was an update on the wildlife inventory process and the public opportunities for some open houses that are forthcoming in the summer. I know there's, you know, ADUs are a big deal, the psilocybin is another big deal. You guys have a lot on your plate. But just wanted to come in here today to encourage you guys to move forward with that process you guys have started. So, thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. And you, the city, are you in Sisters then?
I live off Holmes Road.
Well, but is your address?
706, yes.
Well, no, no, your address is here, but you didn't write which city. Is it Sisters? Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, and we have one more? Yes, Paul Bishop. Would you care to join us, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Paul Bishop. I lived in North Portland, and I'm on my second tour of Bend, Oregon. I live on the west side of Bend, on the west side of the West Side Church. I want to thank you for putting out the garbage dump box, and there was two, but there's, we're down to one. And thank you for putting up the mister and the showerhead for the people on Huddle Road. I go out there with Chuck, and we pick up garbage. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for coming and giving that positive message this morning. Nice to talk to you again today. Okay, we do have several, are there anyone else in the room that would care to address? Think we're good? Okay, I do have several emails that I want to acknowledge. This is against a Klein Butz track. And then we have another one received regarding rifle usage, the Wild West. Our third one is received against Thornburg from someone from Bend. And then we have an email regarding water supply concerns. And we have another one regarding traffic concerns from an 86-year-old resident that was born and raised here. And then we have an email from another resident regarding wildlife inventory. So thank you to all those. Those are in our permanent record. So thank you this morning for that. Are there any raised hands on Zoom, Stephanie? Okay, all right. Do we want to go to the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, just a little bit of discussion.
Okay.
So just acknowledging, we have a couple grants for the Health Department that sometimes we pull those out and have discussions. I'm supportive of putting them on our consent agenda today, really just the goal of making sure that the Board of Commissioners is seeing those grants as they, as they're applied for and as they're received. And also the other item for the Sheriff's Office, vehicle purchase. Just a note that, you know, maybe we can look for opportunities to use, you know, local companies possibly during this. I know that there's a big state purchase contract. We just followed that path, but it ended up being a subsidiary out of the parliamentary and not a local company. So just look for opportunities to use our local companies when we do these big purchases. And that was it.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Go ahead.
No, okay.
Yes.
No comment? Yes. Okay, Commissioner Debone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, we do have item number 10 on our agenda. I believe Nicole, nice to see you this morning.
Nice to see you all. So, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Mardell, I'm a senior planner with Deschutes County Community Development. The topic before you this morning is consideration of second reading of Ordinance 2022-10 by title only. It's the remand of the Deschutes Junction Plan Amendment and Zone Change Application. So staff came before you two weeks ago on July 13th for consideration of first reading, so it's now been the required 14 days. So we're looking for a motion from the Board to move to approve second reading by title only and move to adopt that ordinance number 2022-10.
They can.
Are there any changes from the first version?
Oh, thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner. There was a very minor scrivener's error on Exhibits B and C, which are the maps. So there was a minor error in the signature block, so we did correct that for this version.
Great.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move second reading of Ordinance 2022-010.
Second.
Any further discussion? By title only?
By title only.
Okay, all right.
I guess I, you know, I've said this every, every, every hearing we've had on this or reading we've had on this. But again, I, I believe that this is an appropriate rezone in this, in this case, but I, I, as a general rule, don't support wide-scale rezoning to rural industrial across the county. This is a unique site. It's at a major intersection. It's surrounded by rural industrial land already. And I just want to make that distinction between this and future applicants who might be considering something similar.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chang, for the vote. Commissioner Debone?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes by title only. And Ordinance Amending Deschutes County Code Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to change the Comprehensive Plan map designation for certain property from agricultural to rural industrial, and amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, the Deschutes County zoning map to change the zone designation for certain property from exclusive farm use to rural residential, industrial. I would say residential there. Industrial. So then I do believe we need a move to adopt the ordinance?
I'll move approval of adoption of ordinance number 2022-010.
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Debone?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Okay, item number 11? Kristi.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kristi Bollinger, Deschutes County Property Management. We're here today to ask the Board for authorization to apply for $100,000 grant through DEQ. It's part of their solid waste orphan site grant program. And this would provide the opportunity to complete some pre-work associated with the 300 acres reserved for Core III, the project up in Redmond. And we also have on Zoom with us John Foxwell. He's with Apex Companies, who has been the environmental consultant for that property. And we should also have Scott Acock with COIC. So what we would like to do is just kind of take you through the process. We can always come back for a greater presentation on the 300 acres and the environmental conditions there. But for this purpose, we're, we were, again, just asking for the authorization to apply for the $100,000 grant. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to John Foxwell.
Thank you, Kristi. Thanks, John.
Good morning. John Foxwell here. Thank you for having me this morning. This is the Deschutes County former shooting range property right out near the Redmond Airport. The site has had a variety of uses throughout the years, including what we're here talking about today is a, basically a solid waste disposal area, a solid waste disposal area consisting principally of debris that was taken over from the airport when the airport was, was transferred from military to military uses, to the city. All this stuff ended up there, and then through the years, people have just kind of used it as a, as a dump. And, and that's primarily what we're here to talk about today. Other key features at the site include the former Sheriff's Office Shooting Range and the Redmond, former Redmond Rod and Gun Club. They had a skeet range and a shooting range. The, the project, the project includes a emergency preparedness facility, okay, constructed on the site in and around these various features that are contaminated areas. Get back to our single page view here. So basically, this is, what you're looking at here are some summary of our investigation results, areas where things exceeded cleanup levels based on human and ecological risk. Okay? But again, our focus is here on the solid waste disposal area because frankly, that's the area where the grant money is available to us. The DEQ solid waste program, they, you know, every, you know, every tipping fee that they get out at Arlington, money from that goes into this fund that they use for grants for orphan sites just like these. This is a $100,000 grant we're pursuing, and basically, the goal of the grant is to make this remediation area ready, shovel-ready for the remediation project. There's still a few steps that need to be taken in terms of surveying, surveying the area and, and depths of contamination, so we can kind of finalize the volume. There's, and then we're also proposing to do a, a treatability study to see if this waste can be minimized at all, the volume of this can be minimized at all through, through screening, et cetera. And, and then the third part of this is a cultural resources survey. You know, moving forward, this project will certainly be seeking other grant funding. And, you know, as a condition of most grant-funded projects, you need to have a, a cultural resources survey. And, and given that this stuff came over in the 50s from the airport, it's, it's just something that needs to be done so that we can keep it, keep the development path smooth moving forward. So that's kind of what the grant would be used for, survey, treatability study, cultural resource survey. That was the quick overview I wanted to share with you. Kristi, do you have questions? I'm happy to answer anything.
Thank, thank you for that overview. I'm supportive of the analysis and the cleanup of this site. My, my only concerns about this application are what the impacts to county staff will be. I've said before that I see the primary benefits of this Core III project being statewide in significance. So, you know, this will function as an emergency site in the event of Cascadia or other, you know, major disruptions around the state. It could also address certain specialized training needs that people from, you know, people and organizations from Deschutes County can currently find in other places, but which they'd like to have easier access to here. And those are both very worthy things, but our, our staff at the county is pretty stretched thin on other things that I, to me, are more direct and immediate priorities for the people of Deschutes County. And I want to know that this is not having significant impacts on county staff's ability to work on other issues. So if, if we're going to be the applicant for this, you know, I guess that'd be my first question is why are we, why is the county the applicant on this? And number two, who's going to do all the work to prepare the application and administer the grant and, and those kinds of things?
That's a great question, Commissioner Chang. John, would you mind kind of stepping us through what the three different processes would look like? The survey, the treatability? Can you kind of step us through how that would look?
Yeah, yes, certainly. The, the, the grant application is, is, is complete. It's primarily complete and, you know, pending approval before it gets submitted. The grant application is fairly straightforward, and it really just asked for a summary, a summary of the activities. The activities would primarily be overseen and documented by Apex. Apex would subcontract to a surveyor to survey the extents of, of the landfill. Apex would subcontract to a geophysical surveyor to go with, you know, basically geophysical instrumentation to, for lack of a better term, scan, scan the subsurface and, and help develop, develop an understanding of, of how deep those, these waste bodies are, again, so that we can plan for remediation. The treatability study, this, this waste is all, it's all very coarse. It's very hetero, heterogeneous. And, and there's some potential, there's some potential that we could utilize some separation to reduce the volume that needs to be contained onsite as, as part of the DEQ approved cleanup action. So we really want to see if we can minimize the amount of contaminated media we need to manage. And then the third part, the cultural resources survey, that's kind of a two-step process. It's a desktop survey with the Oregon Historical Society. I forget their, their exact acronym. It's a desktop, desktop survey through them. And, and then we would hire a professor, a subcontract, a, a surveyor that's a professional in these areas to do the actual survey. It's kind of a two-phase process. This whole process would, would take really less than approximately three months, three to four months, to do everything. And the, the grant dispersments, I believe, are quarterly. I believe the grant dispersments are quarterly. Please, I could be incorrect there. It's been a while since we've used one of these. Kristi's predecessor, Susan Ross, used the same grant. We did a treatability study at the former demolition landfill to evaluate whether there was reuse opportunities of the material in the landfill before the decision was made to transfer that property to OSU. So, so this, this grant was used before and, and, and again, I believe it was quarterly dispersments, and I did not believe it was a very onerous process at all, sir.
And Commissioner Chang, to your other question about why would the county be the applicant? It's because we're the property owner.
Okay. And who will be preparing the application? And it was great to hear about the role that Apex will play in it, in managing the project, but, you know.
They'll prepare the application, and then they would send it to us for a review.
Okay.
They would be the preparers.
And then fiscal administration on, on the, on the grant, that would, would that, would that fall with us?
I think we need to probably talk through that part, but I, I, maybe John could speak to that and how that worked with the demolition landfill. I'm not quite sure. John, can you speak to how that worked on the last one?
I believe that the bills were sent to the agency and paid on a quarterly basis.
And...
And, you know, there's a simple monthly, monthly progress report that we prepare that summarizes the activities that were completed and the upcoming tasks.
And so, Kristi, the impacts of that to property, the property division are not so big, it's more work that's going to be done with, you know, with the fiscal office?
Correct, yeah. So Apex would take on the majority of the work, property management will have a role, and then, of course, the financial aspect. We would get, you know, invoices to process and things like that, but that's pretty minimal in the grand scheme.
Okay, yeah, but that's my primary concern, you know. Property management has a lot of things to do, and I, you know, this, to me, spending a lot of time on Core Three is not, is not the highest priority.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, be good to know more, right? I mean, that's the step here, so I want to thank you for, you know, finding or remembering this opportunity. So it looks like the $100,000 is the maximum of a grant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, is there any kind of scoping of the project? Is this a lot bigger than $100,000, or is that just happen to be a good amount for us right now, or any way to gauge that?
Like John had spoke about, this is, this grant is particular to the solid waste section, so we're looking for other opportunities for other grants to remediate the other areas of the property that will need to be remediated.
Well, from my experience talking about this property over the years, that, you know, paving over previous range activity is the remediation. So, you know, I'm just thinking, maybe we don't need to study it a lot more if we can just get it paved over. So that was the message that we received, you know, years ago now, acknowledging that that's how you remediate, you know, the lid or whatever may be in the ground there. But we'll make those decisions into the future.
But is that still the decision in 2022 to pave over if we're talking about things from the 1950s?
Well, the solid waste, that's...
I'm referring to the range area.
Yeah, so solid waste, that's not an option, but the ranges, that potentially is an option.
Okay, all right.
Great, well, you know, thank you for, Commissioner Chang, for, you know, kind of understanding the big scope of this and asking those questions for, you know, the workload of everything. This is something I, looks like we can schedule in and do some paperwork to follow up. It'll be good information to have.
Yes. Thank you, Kristi.
I'll move approval of applying for a $100,000 solid waste orphan site grant administered by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, John and Scott, for joining us.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So Kristi, we have another, the other item about the MOU, we can either, you know, bring it back or try to slip it in right here. Let me just acknowledge that the Core Three MOU for the property, the partners, the public agencies that are partnering with us, there's multiple signers, signatories, people that have added to it since we saw that as a board of commissioners. So there's just, there's a request by the Core Three team at this time to have the board of commissioners acknowledge a few more signatures. So as a safe, Commissioner Dare is the chair, if you don't mind doing that now, or we can do it under other items before the end of the day. I'm just thinking, Kristi's time.
Kristi's time, does she need to be back here for that?
It's up to you.
Unless we do it right now.
Okay, so Kristi, do you want to explain this?
Sure. So as Commissioner DeBonne mentioned, there's a memorandum of understanding that was executed back in March, I believe, and that included the county and multiple agencies and districts that signed on to the MOU, and part of that was to reserve the 300 acres for the Core Three project. So since that time, we've had, I believe it's six now, additional agencies sign on to the MOU, and I would like to memorialize that in the commissioners' journals. So as time goes on, we just always have a clean copy of the MOU and who the partners are. So we have, we have new signature pages from BLM Primeville District Office, USFS Deschutes National Forest, Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, Ochoaco National Forest, and Crooked River National Forest, I believe, and Oregon Department of Forestry, Central Oregon District, and ODOT Region Four. So those are the ones that we'd like to add, and I was speaking with Kim earlier before the meeting started, Kim Riley from County Council, and we thought maybe doing an amendment because that way we can process it, you three could sign if you so choose, and then we could put it in the commercial, in the commissioners' journal. Again, so it's just a clean copy moving forward. So in the future, if someone looks back, it's just always has the most accurate signatures on that document.
And that's what's legal, is recommended also?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I mean, as, we have signed this with a set of signatories, and now there's six more, so we're just acknowledging that.
And I do want to acknowledge, I thought it was really important at the time that Deschutes County set aside these 300 acres for the core project, that it was, I believe, valued at, what, $16 million? So Deschutes County has truly contributed significantly to this pathway forward. So do we have a motion then?
Yeah, so what would a motion look like? Just move approval of an addendum of, or, yeah?
Yeah, and then we'll just route a, we'll create an amendment to the MOU, and we'll route it for your signatures.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll move approval of those, adding those six signatories to the MOU of the Core Three project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristi.
Thank you, Kristi. Thank you, Eric, nice to see this on the agenda today. How appropriate.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. Joining me shortly is staff from Neighbor Impact. We have Scott Cooper, the Executive Director, John Cox, and Andrew Spreadborough. Just pull up the item on my computer. This relates to drought funds the county received from the state of Oregon in the last legislative session. The state provided, or is providing $585,200 to Deschutes County to assist with domestic well assistance. We talked to the board and Neighbor Impact about having Neighbor Impact receive the funds and incorporate it into their housing rehabilitation loan program. The board directed staff to work with Neighbor Impact on an MOU. For your consideration today is the MOU. Just a couple of highlights. In terms of administrative costs, the MOU calls out that Neighbor Impact will receive an amount not to exceed 10%, for program administration. This is Section Three of the MOU, that was at the request of the board. The discussion started out at 15% for program administration, and then through conversations with Neighbor Impact, between the board and Neighbor Impact, there was a direction to do not to exceed 10%. The program will have two main components. The first is a loan program. The MOU calls out that $400,200 will be allocated to the loan program. Borrowers must be at or below 100% of the area median income, and borrowers will be up, will be eligible to borrow up to $50,000. That's in Exhibit A, which is an attachment to the MOU. The second part of the program, at the board's request, is a rebate program. $185,000 will be allocated to this. The rebates shall not exceed $2,000. And there's also discussion among the board about kind of going retroactive. So what the MOU states is that to get a rebate, the project must have incurred costs beginning on January 1st of 2021. Anything, any cost incurred before that would be ineligible. That's a quick summary of the draft MOU, and we're happy to answer any questions.
I'm really personally happy that it's going to be retro, costs starting the 1st of January of 2021 because the numbers that were given to the emergency board last November were from last year. So, and, you know, how, this, as soon as we pass this, how soon will the application date come for those $2,000 rebates? Do we...
What we'll do is, we'll send the MOU to the state, the state will distribute the funds to the county, and so I'll ask Andrew to comment on that.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Andrew Spreadborough, Deputy Director at Neighbor Impact, and before answering that, wanted to express my appreciation for the partnership in getting these dollars out. We are seeing, as you heard, I think at the last meeting that we attended, an increasing demand for water assistance for residential properties in the county. So I think this is a great partnership and really appreciate the, that you called us up to have this discussion. To answer the question, yeah, we have our lending program is established and in operation. We have all of our outreach channels, application processes in place, so this is not a heavy lift to add this program. It will allow us to continue to serve applicants that are having water issues in Deschutes County. So when we have the funding, we're able to really begin accepting applications and processing those, those applications. For the rebate portion, we are in the process of building out an application portal, it'll be online, easily accessible. We'll collect that basic information either online, or if folks do not have internet access, we'll have alternate methods for application, but that process is underway. It's relatively simple to set up that sort of application. The materials that need to be submitted appear to need to be fairly minimal, we just need to document residents and gather some information about the costs, the nature of costs for the well repairs or other improvements made. So I don't have a date certain when we would be ready, but certainly, we could be up and running within a couple weeks and accepting applications.
How long does it usually take the state to do funding?
I don't think it'll be that long because they, we work with them all the time. Our finance department works closely with the state, so I think as soon as we get them, the signed MOU, I imagine it'll be a week or two.
A week or two?
At most.
Well, and let's look for a partnership opportunity to do a press release, you know, when it's ready, because that'll be a good, you know, Neighbor Impact's got quite an impact, and hopefully, Deschutes County's press releases are followed also, so...
No, I think it's really important because a lot of people, their, their well bills have doubled and tripled recently, they can't even get a price, and then their bill has just gone sky-high. So I know I've heard from a lot of people that have had to deepen their well or add a new pump or whatever it is. So the sooner we can get this, you know, this assistance out to the community, I think it's really important.
I wanted to ask about where this slug of funding might fit within prior efforts and future efforts. We are, we are seeing consistent groundwater level declines across Deschutes County in the last, over the last decade, and I fully expect that to continue for a variety of reasons. And we do have a whole lot of people in Deschutes County whose wells were drilled not very deep when, when they were originally put in. So, you know, I would definitely expect this problem, this issue, to continue beyond the period when these funds are available. So I'd love to just get a better understanding of how were you paying for this work prior? And after this, this slug of money is done, how do you, how do you continue the work in the coming years?
Yeah, really good question, and we don't, to be honest, have a really good read on what that demand's going to look like. I think we share your understanding of this issue, and this is not a short-term issue, and frankly, by receiving this, these funds and doing outreach and communications, we may receive even more applicants and more interest for limited funding. So I don't have a quick and easy question for you, or an answer for you, but I would say, you know, our lending program, as mentioned, it's established, it's been up and running for a number of years, gosh, 20-plus years, we've been doing housing rehabilitation loans, and these are low-interest loans primarily to folks that are unbankable or can't get a traditional loan for a home improvement, and we pay for health and safety upgrades to the, to the home. And often, these loans are deferred, so folks don't have to make payments in real time because often, these are homeowners that can't afford to have a loan payment within their budget. So originally, these funds were capitalized through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and Neighbor Impact received many allocations of those fundings. We've lended them out, they've become defederalized, and have just become our body of lending resources that we continue to revolve through the loan program. That's kind of kept us going for many years. It's been a modestly sized program, but now we're in the process of, again, really seeing the need to ramp up our resources available for this lending program. So what we're doing here in the, I guess, the near term is pursuing any opportunities we can to secure additional, primarily grant funding for, to continue to do these loans. We've had discussions with Oregon Water Resource Department, having discussions with Deschutes County Emergency Management, or not Deschutes County, I'm sorry, Department of Human Services Emergency Management around some statewide funding. There's additional resources, I believe, authorized through Senate Bill 51, if I have that number correct, that are available statewide, that we're trying to also encourage folks that are contacting us for assistance to apply through those resources. And so, you know, I think it's kind of a juggling act right now. I think in addition to these funds, we plan to continue to work with the Community Development Block Grant Program. Seems to be a very good fit. It's a, it's a competitive process, we need to apply annually or every couple years for funding, we need to partner with local governments to apply for those funds. We have an open grant currently with City of Primeville, and when we applied for those funds on behalf of the region, initially, the first few projects we did were around housing rehab, you know, roofs or foundations, those sorts of things. We've really shifted now to almost exclusively well projects, it's just that is where the demand is right now. So we foresee some additional applications, and we may want to have conversations with you all, the board of commissioners, around potentially partnering on a future application for CDBG for this purpose. So I guess, you know, again, no really clear path. I think we're trying to be flexible and nimble and pursue any opportunities that come, and I think this, this will help bridge the gap for a certain time period, but we will be looking for additional resources over time, I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you for that background, and, I mean, for me, it's just flagging that we want to make sure that appropriations for the Community Development Block Grant for these types of purposes continue to be available in the future, and that, that's something, you know, I just want to flag for us to, to be talking to our federal delegation about.
I think the important thing is the $185,000, actually, it's only going to be 83 rebates up to $2,000. And the important thing, if you are watching this meeting, you're, it must be your primary residence, so that's important, and it's not any cost for a new well construction according to one of the terms of eligibility, so, and you can only get one rebate, and you will be getting a 1099, so it's going to be taxable income. But truly, I'm sure that people will appreciate, but, you know, those 80, I know we have 83 people in the county because I've talked to a lot of well drillers, and just want them to be aware. So hopefully, maybe within the, what, next month and a half, if we're lucky?
I don't see any reason why not.
Okay, great.
Well, and I'm really pleased with the MOU, you know, this is exactly what we talked about, so thank you very much, everybody, for putting this together. These are state resources. You know, that $400,000 is going to go into the, kind of, the pool of resources that will be able to be, you know, reimbursed or repaid at some point and relended, so it's exciting to see that. And our discussion about those direct rebates, thank you very much, and I think you dialed it right in there, so...
Oh, what is the interest rate doing at this moment in time? I believe we met a couple of months ago, and now the rate is up higher. What is your rate done?
Five and a quarter.
Five and a quarter? Do you expect it going up again, or will that be a firm rate for the next couple of months for this program?
Yeah, we...
We're trying to maintain a stability. I mean, the feds are mediating today, and they're raising it to three quarters.
You'll have to come up and talk and identify yourself, please.
Welcome you to the microphone.
Yes. I mean, I just had to...
Valuable information.
I just had to ask because I think it's important, if this interest rate can be kept fair for our, the people that are seeking the funds.
John Cox, Lending Director, Neighbor Impact, for the record. Yeah, we have been changing our interest rates on a quarterly basis. We meet, and it's a decision that's made through our lending committee, and I make the recommendation bas... our lending committee. And I make the recommendation based on the current environment, and the feds, and Fannie Freddie, et cetera, et cetera. So with the down payment assistance program, we're kind of undercutting the rate to keep that program alive and well because they're getting priced out of the market. But on the rehab side, we are trying to stick to a margin over prime. And as prime changes, then our margin reflects the difference in the interest rate. So currently, five and a quarter. Possibly next quarter, the committee could change that to 6%.
But once someone signs a loan agreement, is that a standard, will they be at the five and a quarter?
Correct. At application, actually, before a loan is even approved, they'll get the rate at application date.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you so much for clarifying.
There's no further questions. Move County Administrator's signature of document number 2022-640, an MOU between Deschutes County and Neighbor Impact for Domestic Well Assistance Grant and Loan Program.
And I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Debone?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And thank you so very much. Thanks for putting this together.
Two final comments. First, I'd like to thank Neighbor Impact. They took the lead on this MOU, so they did the heavy lifting, and they've been great to work with. And then we'll get the County Administrator's signature on the MOU, send it to the state. We'll also, either next week or the following week, come back to the board with a budget adjustment to account for the funds. But we'll send this to the state immediately so that we can do those things in parallel fashion.
Great.
The budget adjustment will be on consent agenda.
So the week after, then?
Either next week or the following week, depending on.
We don't have meetings next week.
The following week, then.
Yes. Don't forget, the county fair starts next Wednesday, a week from today. So thank you, Eric. And thank you, Neighbor Head. Thank you, Neighbor Impact, for all that you've done. So we're to item number 13, Department Measurement Updates. Laura.
Thank you, Commissioners. Laura Skundrick, Administrative Staff in this role. So today we have Quarter Four Performance Measure Updates from Departments for you. Each year, the Board sets goals and objectives, and then Departments develop performance measures to help the Board meet those goals. So each quarter, we come to the Board with updates from Departments to give you a snapshot on the progress being made on implementation of those measures. So this quarter, the measures and objectives fall under the goal of service delivery. So to start with, we have two updates under the objective to support and promote Deschutes County Customer Service Everytime Standards. And we will start out with our Veteran Services Director, Keith McNamara, I believe is here with us.
And while he's coming up, I just want to thank all the departments. You know, this is our annual, kind of, goals and objectives, little updates. And this is a time where a lot of moving parts in the world. We just talked about interest rates, you know, energy prices, and all the different things that are happening. So it's just good to take a moment and remind ourselves that we're just, we are offering great services, cost-effective to everybody in Deschutes County. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Keith. I hear you're going to have something big at the fair.
We are.
Yes, something really big. So that's great.
Keith McNamara, Veteran Services. Just brief overview of our services. We provide advocacy and assistance in applying for VA benefits for the residents of Deschutes County, the veterans of Deschutes County and their families. We assist with disability, healthcare, compensation benefits, things like that. We also provide numerous resources to other areas in the community. You know, if their services are available, we can point them in the right direction to get there. We currently do outreach out in the Pine. We have an office down there. We're providing outreach services down there right now. So the customer service standards, obviously, our goal is to provide the best customer service we can possibly provide in a timely manner. There was at one point in time where our wait times were extremely long to get an appointment. And our goal was to maintain less than the 10 days, 10 days or less wait period for an appointment. We have achieved that goal. We are maintaining that goal. This last quarter, it was 100%. There was nobody outside of that 10-day mark. So we are currently doing in-person appointments as well, or phone appointments. The last quarter, for instance, we had 388 appointments that we conducted during the quarter for the veterans and families. And we, you know, with all the benefits that come into the veterans, if it's a compensational benefit that helps the community with economics, they spend their money here, pay their mortgage payments and their bills and things like that with that money. And it really helps them in a stable living environment. It's life-changing for a lot of folks. And that's our goal. If we can help in any way, shape, or form to make that little bit of change in somebody's life, then that's what we're going to do. Commissioner, yes, we do have a big event at the fair this year. It's going to be, it's going to be pretty nice, I think. You'll have to stop by and see us. And see the memorial. We brought in a memorial this year that we've never seen before. So that's going to be really, really something to see, I think, so.
Well, so in that metric, seeing customers within 10 days, I know that there's, you know, a lot of veterans, we've got history now, the different actions that people, you know, have served in. Getting that, getting the motivation to even call is the step sometimes, right? You know, having people say, oh, that's not me, or I don't need those services. But all of a sudden, life conditions change. You're like, oh, I might need some help here. So being able to respond in a timely fashion is so valuable when people are asking to get engaged.
It is. And we hear it every day. You know, we didn't know you were here. Or somebody else needed it more than, more than I did. Everybody that served or is entitled to the same thing. So nobody needs it more than anybody else. Everybody's entitled to it, and they should be, they should be getting their benefits.
So Keith, were those 388 new people that are in our system?
Those, out of there, there was, I'm guessing, 284 new clients out of those 388 appointments. So, yeah, you know, we're actually doing some walk-ins right now. You know, if we're in between times and we have that walk-in, we'll just take them in right now and take care of it instead of making them wait, you know.
That's really wonderful in today's world. When you can have, you can offer that kind of customer service, I think it truly, it means a lot. And especially to veterans that have served and deserve that, you know, that kind of a response. So thank you. Thank you to your team for stepping up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No, it does, it means a lot. So.
Yeah, thank you.
You'll probably have more people walking in now.
That's good.
That's okay.
Keith, I'm curious, when you just mentioned how many of those were new, were new clients. We all have a sense of how fast the population of Deschutes County is growing overall. Is the population of veterans growing kind of like in proportion with that, or?
It is. We are seeing an increase. It's hard to determine sometimes because veterans in themselves sometimes try to stay in the back country, more or less. You know, there's no place that says, if you're a veteran, check in here. I wish there was. That would be kind of nice. But we are seeing an increase, absolutely. We get phone calls every day. I'm retiring, you know, in the next three months. Can I get something set up now for when I get there? You know, that kind of thing. So we are seeing an influx of people moving up here.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chair, if I just may say, and so, Keith, your staff is five, how many people do on your team?
We have five, including myself.
You serve over 15,000 veterans in our county. And it's just extraordinary what you do and your team do. And yesterday, I was on a podcast with Cascade Views, and I promoted your services again. And just, so you may get more calls there as well when that's, when that's published. This is one of my favorite times of all of our board meetings, is to recognize our departments and to hear about the great things you're doing. So thanks, Keith, and we look forward to a great, great week at the fair. So.
Great. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciated your support.
Thanks.
Looking forward to coming by the booth. So thank you, Keith.
All right. Next, under the Customer Service Everytime Standards, we have our County Clerk, Steve Dennison, with us.
Thank you for joining us.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Steve Dennison, County Clerk. Thanks for having me. So I'm here to report on our performance measure of supporting and promoting Deschutes County Customer Service Everyday Standards, as Laura had said, every time standards. And our measure specifically is to measure election personnel costs and compare that per 1,000 ballots cast for any countywide election, and reporting that and keeping that within 10% of a previous similarly typed election. So just for, to kind of bring it around here, 2018, our May primary election, our cost per 1,000 ballots was $381. This most recent primary election, our costs were $202 per 1,000 ballots cast. Significant saving, well outside of that 10% goal, to keep it within 10%. But there were some, there were quite a few factors that played into, into that savings. And this measure, and this personnel measurement is, it's outside of our dedicated, our amazing staff, but our dedicated regular FTE of 11. So this is any additional staff that we bring in to help us run elections. We have, you had previously approved one additional FTE for elections, so thank you for that. You also approved a double fill in advance of a retiring, longtime-serving election person that we have on staff. So thank you for that as well. So we had more regular staff in the office, so we didn't need to bring in as many on-call staff to help us run the primary election this time around. So that savings is reflected in this, in this $202 per 1,000 ballot measure. The other factor was the, that we had omitted that, intentionally omitted the optional secrecy sleeve starting this past election. So that saved us a lot with the election boards and processing at our tables. They had, you know, they had less, less manual work to do in removing the sleeve. So that was, that was, it increased their throughput during the election. So, and that'll be a savings that'll be going forward as well, as we don't intend in bringing back that secrecy sleeve. So those two factors weighed heavily in savings, and a lot of that will be going, going forward as well. The two regular FTE dedicated to elections and without the secrecy sleeve. So glad to answer any questions about this measure, if you have any.
Seems very unusual to have something cost almost half of what it cost in 18.
It was, yeah, and that's the other factor, too. So in 18, we had 11,000 less ballots. So having the boards, having that number, our cost for the boards come in, I think it was somewhere in the $6,000 range for the cost for our boards this election, and roughly 7,000, you know, it was somewhere around there. It might have been a $700 difference savings with the boards, but they processed 11,000 more ballots this time around. So yeah, seeing that number on paper, it's a, it's.
Okay, when it, yes, a cost per 1,000, and if you have 11,000 less, yes.
Yeah, and we had 11,000, yeah, exactly. Four years ago, we had 11,000 less. And of course, costs, labor costs have gone up as minimum wage has gone up and all of our other things. But just, yeah, trying to always increase productivity in an efficient manner.
Those are really impressive efficiency statistics, especially considering, yeah, how much more, how much more scrutiny there is of elections these days than there was maybe just four, four years ago. So being able to maintain excellent standards of accuracy and security at the same time that you're bringing down costs is, is something to really be congratulated for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, and, you know, having the timely tallies, because it's a project, you know, getting the early ballots, getting everything ready, getting that first results and getting through there. Yeah, thank you very much to you and the team for, you know, having that confidence in our, in our ballot system here in Deschutes County.
Very much. Again, I can't speak enough to the regular staff that we do have, that we have, our amazing team that are outside, reflected outside of this, this measure. But they, they are the key to our success.
Great. And you didn't ask us to enlarge your capacity or anything today, so that's really nice.
No, I think we're-
I know, that's not on the agenda, but I know you, so you need more space.
Appropriately staffed. But again, yeah, there is that space concern.
Space will be the next thing.
Exactly.
Well, thank you, Steve.
We should, we should constantly remind ourselves that every election that we don't have a, have incidents like that they, like they had in Clackamas County this last spring, is, you know, oftentimes, people don't take time to notice when things don't go wrong. They only notice when things do go wrong. But much appreciation that, for how many times, things are just running smoothly, and there's, there's no drama and no story that people are telling about, about our elections.
We don't make headlines when we get it right.
There you go.
But yeah, and, yeah, I don't wish that on anybody. What happened up there, and as we do plan for, we have contingencies for so many factors and so many issues. There's always the unknown, and unfortunately, I-
Right, right. But just to connect that with the capacity question, you know, but, you know, again, much appreciation for, you know, doing such a great job keeping us out of the bad headlines. And the things that you need to keep doing that, we should be paying attention to. So, you know, definitely keep us posted on, on your needs.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Our next objective is to preserve, expand, and enhance capital assets to ensure sufficient space for operational needs. And with us is Facilities Director, Lee Randall.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you. Good morning, Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
So real quick, let me step in. So the objective, preserve, expand, and enhance capital assets to sufficient space for operational needs. I mean, that is timely. You know, this is a new, the new wording of our objective of Deschutes County. So, you know, we go to an annual Goals and Objectives session, and these are the words that we put on the page. So thank you very much for responding to them.
You're welcome. So our performance measure is to refine and expand space planning efforts and capital project execution through facility master planning, capital improvement budgeting, and capital project management, to complete the year four update to the Public Safety Campus Plan, and initiate master planning for the downtown campus. So today, I'd like to specifically focus on the Public Safety Campus Plan update, which is currently underway, and provide some information related to that project. To begin, just a quick overview, the Public Safety Campus on the north end of Bend has a variety of stakeholders. It's about 27 acres. The Sheriff's Office, Community Justice, 911 Dispatch, Oregon State Police, the Stabilization Center, and the Recovery Center, as well as Veterans Village. And so we had done a plan in 2018 that led to several projects which are now coming to completion, which included the Stabilization Center and Community Service Shop, Probation Project, among others. And so there were also other needs and projects that came out of that plan, mostly focused on the Sheriff's Office. And so this year, we've, over the winter, we selected a team of KMB architects who specialize in public safety and detention facilities, along with Pinnacle Architecture, which is a local firm. KMB is a regional Pacific Northwest firm. And they went to work in April, putting together preliminary information and findings related to our campus. And then since that time, the team has met twice. This will be a year-long- then since that time, uh, the team has met twice. Um, this will be a year-long, uh, project, uh, going, running through next spring, likely June of '23. Um, and it really has two components. One is to update the campus plan. And then the second is to complete programming and schematic design for the sheriff's office projects that were identified in 2018. Um, the status currently is, uh, that we had a round of meetings in June, um, that included a steering committee, uh, made up of, uh, members of, uh, the administrative team, uh, here at the county, along with department heads, um, for each stakeholder department. Um, and then, uh, as well as, um, individual preliminary needs assessment meetings with each stakeholder team. So, uh, the, um, design team took an entire week in June, uh, met individually with each department onsite, did site tours. Um, there were four full days of work put in, uh, by the design team with touring each facility, gathering information. They then went to work, uh, in the intervening month, put together a preliminary needs assessment. And then, uh, just this, uh, last week, uh, they were back, uh, on campus. Um, we met again with the steering committee, uh, presented that needs assessment as a kind of check-in to make sure that we're getting the information correct. Um, and then they had, uh, meetings with the sheriff's office specifically for that second part of the project, uh, which is working through programming and schematic design for needs related to the jail and then also needs related to, um, the sheriff's office administration building. Um, our plan is to, uh, have more information to report back to the board, uh, in October. Um, the team is going to be working, uh, through August. In September, we'll have some follow-up meetings again in September, which will mostly be remote meetings. And then, uh, we'll have information to provide to the board for, uh, an update and to, um, to gather direction and input, uh, from the board. So that's the, um, the current, uh, status for that part of the, the planning process that we're working on. Uh, the big picture is that as we grow and as we prepare for the future, there's, um, a wide variety of planning, uh, that we, would be great for us to be working on. Um, capacity, as you know, is limited for all departments. There's only so much we can do at once. Um, and the public safety campus is the, the current one that we're focused on. So, um, thank you.
Well, Lee, I want to thank you. I mean, your professionalism and expertise in these matters. I mean, this is a point in time. You know, this is the growth phase of the county. Uh, you know, we've seen it for 10 years kind of coming, but all of a sudden, you know, building the courthouse and working on the big, the big plans for what we need to do. So I just congratulate you and your career opportunity here. This is big stuff we're talking about.
It's, it's really exciting to be a part of it and to be able to participate and, and work on things that are important for our community.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. The, the array of services that we provide at this public safety campus and the downtown campus is, 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 uh, it's really vast. I mean, and, um, those departments, I mean, from the, you know, the sheriff's office to behavioral health to, you know, assessors, I mean, the, we, we need very specialized facilities, um, for all of those departments to be able to do their job and provide excellent service. And, um, those excellent facilities don't happen by accident. And so thank you for, for being the keeper and the, the long-term planner and, um, making all of these great things happen to, to have, uh, you know, a top-notch, uh, facilities to, to do our working.
Lee, I just want to talk to you about your team. I know you've lost some people that were really significant. Have, have you replaced those people today with people that you, that have been able to step up and help, um, you in your, all your endeavors?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, we have, as you know, you hear this from everyone.
Yes.
It's a very challenging environment to hire. Um, and that's specific to, uh, our, um, project management team. It's been really challenging. So, um, we're, we're currently, um, uh, at the end of a recruitment. We'll see how that goes. Um, and then, uh, if, depending on how that turns out, um, we may need to do some, um, kind of a restart and, um, look at how we might go about recruitment in a different way and maybe even look at how our positions are structured. So, um, we haven't, we haven't yet made progress on that. And so currently we're, we're able to utilize, uh, some outside project management assistance. Um, that can be challenging, uh, because folks, uh, don't necessarily have experience with our processes and our buildings. And so that has its own, uh, set of challenges. So really our goal is to build our internal team. Um, and we're continuing to work on that.
I, I hated to ask, but yet I wanted.
Yeah.
To know because I realize that there's a lot of weight on your shoulders.
Thank you.
You've got a lot of things going on and, and you, we're definitely working in very unique circumstances in the entire world. So, um, I hope that, that recruitment is successful.
Thank you.
So, yeah, totally someone that's a part of Deschutes County will, will, you know, just be much more helpful to you and your success. But thank you for all you do.
Chair, if I just may, um, jump in and just echo, echo your comments, uh, and, and go just a bit further. Lee, um, and his team are just doing a, an exceptional job, um, short-staffed with the biggest projects that we have experienced in the county for a long time and on the horizon. Um, I know they're burning the candle and then all of a sudden we have a heat wave like this and that puts more demands on the team. Um, and what they're doing is, uh, I mean, it's, it, we really need to recognize, uh, your leadership, Lee. And as you mentioned, you're, you're doing everything you can just to fill the spaces you have, the positions you have to tackle the biggest projects we've ever had. And so Commissioners, I'll be the one that say, that, that just shares with you that we may be coming back here in a couple of months to ask for additional capacity for Lee and his team to carry out successfully, on time, on or under budget, all of these really significant projects. Um, so just, I just really want to take the moment to recognize Lee and, and his, his team as well. Thank you.
Maybe we should do that earlier rather than in a couple of months. I mean, we've got to think out of the box. Now, I'm hoping I found someone for 911. And I'm going to be really happy if I've done that. But anyway, I know your team needs, so please.
And I just want to speak really quickly to our team. Uh, various, uh, team members from, um, especially in our office staff, but also our, uh, field members, everyone's stepping up and taking on, uh, new challenges and responsibilities and they're doing a great job. And so I couldn't be happier to be a part of the team that we have. And obviously we'll be looking to grow the team as well. But our current team from project coordination, um, our management analysts, our, our supervisors, um, and then at all, all of our positions across the department, um, are extraordinary. And I'm, I'm happy and really, um, grateful to be a part of that team. So thanks for recognizing them as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Our next objective is to maintain strong fiscal practices to support short and long-term county needs. And with us today is Human Resources Director Kathleen Henman to talk about that.
Thank you. Hello Commissioners, Kathleen Henman, for the record, HR Director. So, uh, county goal, I'm here to talk on, about and report, um, the, the measure that we're, we, um, put in place for FY '22 is to maintain healthcare cost inflation at or below national average of five to seven percent for self-funded plans. Um, one thing I'll just comment on, that national average has moved already. Um, we're already seeing that moving to the seven to nine percent range because of increased cost. So, sort of with that, um, the, the county's plan, as, as I've probably known news to you all, we've talked about the, the real spike in claims, uh, costs that we saw in '22. Um, it was sort of a, um, due to many, um, issues or items. So the reality is when we look at where we're running year over year in FY '22, we actually saw a 24% increase in our expenses over, um, FY '21. Now with, uh, things like insurance, we look at average as a five-year average because a one-year can just be a dramatic reaction, which we just saw unexperienced. Um, and so our five-year average right now, including that FY '22, is 7.5%. So we are actually still running in the new, uh, norm in terms of, um, the healthcare increases. Just to put a little bit of perspective of the impact of what this last year's claims cost had, um, our five-year average excluding FY '22, so looking back five years prior, was running at 3.1%. So that one year was pretty, um, dramatic in terms of impacting not only our five-year average, but also just our, um, our experience in costs in general. So what are these, uh, higher costs due to? What are they attributed to? Couple of things. We have higher utilization in general. Uh, members are catching up on deferred care, which, that's a good thing. Um, but it does, you know, impact, uh, our cost. People in, uh, are in general more unhealthy. Um, the, the effects of COVID were real. Um, and so we are seeing, um, some of our higher cost claims are, um, conditions that maybe would have been either preventable or able to manage better, um, if we had been, i- if the member had been maybe engaged in medical care sooner, right? So, um, we may not have seen hypertension get all the way to, um, uh, some serious heart condition, right? Um, and that caused higher cost claims for us in the end, right? So there are some that we are hoping, uh, to get folks back into, and we're seeing it with those claims costs, um, sort of that, that regular care, um, that preventative maintenance, know your numbers, um, kind of just be in touch with, uh, sort of the, the health of, um, yourself. We are seeing a number of those, uh, we, we calculate and we, we look at our high-cost claims sort of in groups. Um, and there's a 25,000 to 50,000 group, um, 50,000 to 100,000 and above. And where we're actually seeing the largest increase in the number of claims is in that 25 to 50,000 range. And so, um, a little bit of perspective, um, the end of, and this is, go ahead.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Okay. We have employees and families covered in Deschutes County healthcare.
Correct.
So do you have a total number of how many people are actually in our healthcare system? I'm just one, I'm wondering.
On our plan.
Yeah, on our plan, how many people are covered? Because from what I've read, Americans have lost two years of their life from the two years of COVID because they weren't going to the doctor, exactly what you're saying. And I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking, okay, can we take our numbers and extrapolate them out to, um, what really happened? I mean, people, it wasn't healthy. I mean, it wasn't healthy, what was happening. I, I saw my friends, they were, you know, drinking every night or whatever. It was like the choices people made and it, it's really unfortunate. Cause you, you are now seeing those in dollars.
We are. Yeah. And, and some of it was sort of undetected care, you know, um, conditions as well, right? So, um, we have 1,100, um, employees covered on our plan. Um, and Trigvi, do we have a number of belly buttons?
About 3,200, between 32 and 3,300 at any given time.
Okay. So about 32 to 3,300 lives covered on our plan.
Thirty, okay, totally. So, I mean, I just, it is interesting. And then the fact that our healthcare system was, um, elective surgeries, I believe it was like five, six thousand were being postponed. You know, when you meet someone and they've had an elbow that's been killing them for 16 months and it's, and they're finally getting that surgery that they needed, probably 14 months earlier. And it's, you know, and it actually, when you postpone things, they get worse. So I can see where you're saying that the 25,000 to 50,000 is where our costs really have jumped then, per person?
We're seeing the number of claims increasing there.
Okay.
So as we start to see those claims increase, we see the overall cost increase. I mean, the, the, the positive to that is we're not seeing more in the, more than 100,000, right? So it is in this lower range, but they are things, um, 14 of our top, uh, I think it's 50 claims are prescription-related. And so, um, are the cost of, uh, pharmaceuticals we saw over, um, the years of COVID really increased, right? Those costs increased. Um, and working with our benefits consultants, they're actually seeing, um, these double-digit increases for, for '22, um, sort of universally applied. So we're, we're definitely not in, um, outside of the norm in, in seeing kind of the impact of, uh, delayed care. But also as we've all kind of, I've, I've heard here discussed as well, the cost of everything has gone up. And so some of the other items that were attributed to, um, is there's new technology in healthcare, which is great, but it is more expensive. Um, there are hospitals that are recouping costs after the pandemic. And we're seeing just general economic inflation that's hitting everyone and everything. So, you know, cost of a Band-Aid has gone up, for instance, right? So all of those pieces kind of combined with the health, the, the, um, impact of healthcare. And then we had a couple of other items that, you know, hit. We had one really high claim, um, that we don't anticipate, you know, it's not going to be an ongoing, um, cost at that rate. There will be ongoing medical care that's attributed to it that will be higher. Um, but it's not going to be at that, that huge, nearly $2 million claim, right? So that coupled with these other pieces, um, and then because of that, uh, our stop-loss insurance, for instance, has gone up, right? So some of the, the carriers that we work with, they look at the plan and, um, you know, provide us a bid based on utilization, et cetera. And so that, um, dramatically increased. We have, I, I never thought I would be so happy to have a 45% rate limit on, um, uh, in, in an, in a insurance contract. Um, but we actually use that two years in a row now, um, where our utilization, uh, for stop-loss was such that, um, we had that rate cap. And I'm glad we did, because we actually went back out to bid to see if there were some, um, other, uh, organizations that would give us a better rate. And there, um, they did not. So we used that 45% limit, that cap. Um, there's a couple of good, uh, things in the future is that we do expect that these, you know, these costs probably aren't going down in terms of the increased cost of healthcare, um, claims. We hope to see that going down. When we looked at, um, we do some, uh, projection and, and modeling with our, um, consultant and actuarial about the health of our plan. Um, and we have a rating number and that has usually been under one or 100. And, um, it, we saw that project up for '22, which we said, yes, that's accurate. We felt that. We see that in '23 going back down, not quite to, um, below, back to where we were, but we are starting to see that sort of trend down a little. Um, so we do expect it to come down. We do expect this to be one of those anomaly years, this to not be the new norm. Um, but we did have to bear that, um, those costs in FY '22.
Well, and we'd been, so I'm, there's a couple of different things here. The total cost of the plan over time, but then the, you know, health benefits reserve. Uh, and we know that, you know, it's been in the media and we've kind of struggled with, well, it grew this year and we didn't really see that. But this was the rainy day. You know, that's the reality of it. So this is good that we have a system that, that was able to have the resources to respond. Uh, and the future is going to be different. Hopefully it'll, it'll stabilize out. But, uh, it's good we had those resources during this period.
Absolutely. And that's all I had. Is there any other questions or anything I can answer, Commissioners?
It seems like the numbers you were just giving us, um, were a bit different than the Q4 update in this memo.
So the Q4 update, this report that, um, we, we use, it looks at months at a time. And so that's what I was kind of mentioning is that, um, this looks at what this three month, what this quarter looked like last year and how we changed the specific quarter to last quarter. Um, and, and one of the things we looked at is that that, especially in '22, was just too volatile to really measure, right? Which is why we kind of saw this jump of 13% over that period of time, um, 18% over February to April, year over year. And so one of the things we do is we look at the, that average. Um, but what this does represent, what our, our measure represents is that, um, this entire plan year, uh, or, um, fiscal year was much higher than our last, um, fiscal year.
Okay. The performance measure, you said though, that the national average now, instead of five to seven, is actually seven to nine.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and in fact, you know, going forward, um, due to this volatility, we'll likely not look quarter to quarter, but look at average. Um, and either, uh, five-year is sort of standard in this, um, because that sort of averages out some of those intense years like we've had here.
Intense, yes.
Yes.
That's a, such a description.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad we have the, you know, professionalism and history in the program too. You know, I mean, we know that we've had it in place. We can manage it. And it's really good for, you know, for the people that are working for Deschutes County.
It really is. I mean, we continue to hear this being one of the, um, our benefit plan, as well as our onsite clinic and the services that are there, um, to be one of the, um, biggest factors for retention for our staff. So, um, really glad that we have this program and this benefit for our employees.
Well, and I mean, cost control for the taxpayers, you know, we're providing these cost-effective services and we have a healthy workforce. It's very cost-effective for everybody.
It was, wasn't it like first or second in all the surveys, the, the health plan? So, okay. Well, thank you for watching it very closely because it is definitely, um, and it challenging time.
Thank you. All right, next we'll have two measures under the next objective, which is to ensure quality service delivery through the use of innovative technology and systems. Uh, the first update is from the assessor's office, however, they were not able to join us today, um, but their update is outlined in the staff report as you have in front of you. Um, the second one is under that same objective, and we will hear from our IT operations manager, Kevin Furlong.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Uh, don't feel bad, everybody else just went back to work. I mean, now there's nobody in the room here, but.
That's all right, that's all right. So I'm Kevin Furlong, I'm the operations manager in the IT department. And, uh, one of our, um, performance measures is to implement a, uh, network device inventory, asset inventory, uh, system, an automated one. And that's all towards the, uh, greater objective of improving our cybersecurity and our posture in that realm. So we are still currently evaluating some systems out there, software products that do this, and, uh, finding some very, uh, very interesting and attractive products that way. Also, existing products that we have in our cybersecurity defenses have expanded their functionality. And so, uh, we, we are very strongly considering a product that we already use and been very good to us for many years, and it looks very promising that it will perform this duty for us. And so we're leveraging that as much as we can and currently devoting our attention toward , um, researching the details there. So it's still ongoing is the, is the net result, but, uh, we're coming very close to finalizing what we're going to choose.
All right.
Well, cybersecurity is really important. Uh, you know, I think we've gone through an evolution of, you know, having access to a desktop at work and then wanting to, you know, check the news or check your personal email and hopefully, I mean, it's evolving. I don't, I don't even do anything personal on my, you know, computer. My point is, I mean, I was sitting in a cubicle twenty years ago and it, and it was just the Wild West. And now let's get real business-like, let's be safe and secure in our actions with our tools at work, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, the, the whole realm of cybersecurity has become an entire, well, discipline in a, in and of itself, a whole career and a whole philosophy and everything. So, uh, that just is rare to actually witness that in one's own lifetime, the creation of a new discipline. But we actually have, just like chemistry or physics or whatever, those disciplines. Cybersecurity has become one itself in the same, same manner. And, uh.
And we're reminded of it when we run into the commissioners from Tillamook County and what they dealt with.
Yes.
And I think when I first took office, we didn't have an insurance policy and I, I've, what, I heard the rates went up, but they troubled or, you know, it's getting extremely expensive to have a policy. But, um, Tillamook, I believe had a couple, uh, a couple of weeks of, uh, a lot of things to deal with.
Extreme, yes, to say the least.
And, and we don't want that to happen here in Deschutes.
Absolutely not.
Not!
Absolutely not.
So, yes, whatever you can do, Kevin, to keep us, um, safe.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's incumbent on everybody to use those tools safely too, is, is part of it.
Right, right. And, and of course, you guys have all been supportive in our, in our budget requests toward, um, partnering with, uh, specialists, uh, consulting firms. So we'll be bidding for that in the coming months to augment our own, uh, our own sophistication with the professionals that are very highly specialized. And so utilize those tools to the maximum.
Well, and I think of, you know, the days of reminding you not to just pop a CD in that you don't know where it came from or a thumb drive, and I'm not even using that as much anymore. You know, sometimes you need to move files, but, and the world's really changing, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. No, it, yeah, so fast.
Commissioners, it's similar to elections. You don't hear about the good things when they're happening well, just like we're, we're succeeding with cybersecurity, we only hear about it when something, um, negative happens. And so the fact that we haven't, it's really a testament to the great work your team's doing and, uh, the, the board for approving the budget, as, as Kevin just mentioned, for continuing that really, really important work this year. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you for fending, uh, fending off all those threats every single day.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last two updates are from the justice court. Um, they fall under two different objectives. Unfortunately, Judge Faedley, uh, was not able to attend our meeting today, um, due to an arraignment that was scheduled. So, um, those updates are outlined in the staff report. They fall under the objectives, uh, to promote community participation and engagement with county government and to provide collaborative internal support for county operations. And as you can see in the materials, um, that staff report, those have both been met or exceeded. So that actually concludes our quarter four updates.
Great.
And I'll acknowledge, you know, the justice court is so valuable because these are, you know, traffic tickets or small claim items, and, you know, if a small issue can be dealt with, it just lets people move on in their lives and their personal business. Uh, so it's really valuable just to have that court and have people, uh, you know, feel the confidence of a, a judge or a, you know, a legal process just to get resolution. So I'm glad we support that also.
The interesting thing to remind the public is that he told us, um, at our meeting not too long ago, that twenty-two percent of the tickets were from outsiders, the tourists visiting. And then the other day, when I was speaking with Chief Krantz, he said, you remember they were doing that three-week, let's watch the traffic slow down? Um, fifty percent of the people that they were stopping were tourists, fifty percent. So if, if we all can slow down, maybe the tourists could slow down too.
When I think of it as commuters, because I'm driving back between Lepine and here every day, and the vehicles that kind of zigzag and just want to go faster, I have a hunch they're going from Washington to California, they're not even stopping here. You know, they're just zooming through central Oregon, up and down ninety-seven. That's kind of what I see.
Yes. Well, and they're, yes, I can remember, oh my gosh, you told me somebody was going like a hundred miles an hour somewhere where they shouldn't have been and it, you know, we've, we had some serious speeding going on. They, I guess they didn't realize we were stopping them.
I mean, during, during the, during those couple of weeks of speed trap, most of the locals knew that it was happening too, so.
Maybe that, that's why it was, it was more pronounced, you know, locals driving slow, out of towners zigzagging around.
That's why they were catching more of the, a higher ratio of outsiders, I think.
Well, normally it's, what, as he said, twenty-two, a quarter of our people that are stopped are outsiders, so. Please, keep driving slowly, folks.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura.
Chair, if I just may say thanks to Laura. Laura has been promoted to our finance department. She has continued with us to complete this, the quarterly performance measures. She's performed exceptionally well for us, uh, reporting these each, each quarter, and we thank you and we congratulate you on your, on your promotion, so.
Thank you very much, I'm excited.
Well, and I think we'll see you with a spreadsheet for ARPA numbers here soon enough, right?
Won't be too far.
Yes.
I'll be back.
When's your transition day?
What's up?
When is your, when is your, what date do you?
I started on Monday, so two days ago. I'm deep into training currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, I do believe we're up to item number fourteen. Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Uh, we have an agenda, uh, item and a memorandum, uh, before you to seek direction from the Board of County Commissioners, um, as it pertains to psilocybin and whether the board is interested in directing staff to develop time, place, and manner amendments, uh, as it pertains to the psilocybin, psilocybin program. That includes production processing and the service centers. Uh, we are in a position to, uh, execute a amendment, uh, this fall. The schedule is admittedly tight, but as noted in the memorandum, there's a, a schedule there that shows how we would execute that. Since psilocybin, the program is not on our work program, um, we were not in a position to project, uh, what the psilocybin, psilocybin program would mean as we were developing our, our work program for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, earlier this year. Um, and so to, to undertake it will require us to, uh, postpone what we've identified are, are one or, one or two, uh, projects that are of high, high priority for the board. And as you heard this morning under citizen comment, there's many members of the community that are, uh, very interested in, in one of these two programs. The first is, uh, the rural accessory dwelling unit, uh, opportunity to implement Senate Bill three ninety-one. I want to clarify, I spoke to Richard Ko, uh, who, who is the Bulletin editorial, uh, representative. I misquoted the number of, uh, eligible tax lots that would be available for a rural ADU if Senate Bill three ninety-one was implemented locally. Uh, I, I was quoted as saying four thousand eligible tax lots. That number is two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one, so just short of three thousand tax lots. There are six thousand six hundred and thirty-five tax lots, and this is just a baseline number that would not be able to be implemented immediately because they're affected by Senate Bill seven sixty-two and the, uh, the provisions in that law that pertain to properties that have a, a high to extreme risk classification for wildfire. Um, that represents the number, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one represents forty-four percent of eligible tax lots. So just wanted to clarify that and apologize for any confusion. We, that, this project is, just for further context for anyone who might be listening, this is a very discreet project. Uh, the legislature put this into law in twenty-twenty-one, uh, had some, uh, correlations with Senate Bill seven sixty-two as it pertains to wildfire mitigation. There needed to be some corrections in the short section, short session in twenty-twenty-two that was made to clarify how, how Senate Bills three ninety-one and rural accessory dwelling units would have to comply with fire hardening and defensible spaces. So that, that, that patch has been made, and, um, we are in a position to come back as, uh, as early as the, uh, after the fair on August eighth to give you an update of what those, what those draft amendments would look like, and we could initiate, uh, those amendments formally to get them to the planning commission in, in September.
We're talking about accessory dwelling units and fire, uh, I mean, all those comments were along those lines.
Correct. We would, we would amend to, we would, we would set up amendments that would, uh, would, the code would be structured to allow staff to address those properties that are affected by Senate Bill seven sixty-two and, and, uh, the, the wildfire obligations. If the amendments were acknowledged, we just couldn't process eligible, uh, applications until April first. But we're talking about one set of amendments that would address both, both categories of lots that I summarized, those that are not affected by Senate Bill seven sixty-two and those that are. Uh, so that's, that's, that's one project, and, and we know that that's a high priority for the board. The second proj-
Peter, can I just, I repeat, um, the ones that cannot be implemented, that's six thousand six hundred and thirty-five, is that right?
Yes, that's a baseline number, correct.
Okay, so that ends up being ninety-five hundred and eighty, nine thousand five hundred and eighty-six together?
Correct. There's over nine thousand lots at a baseline level that could be eligible. Some of those lots don't have a house on them already.
Right, weren't there like two thousand of those?
But we gave, this is a gross number. Um, and, and so, yes, so forty-four percent of, of those lots that are, uh, recognized as being in rural residential zones, uh, if the amendments went through, could be, uh, available to apply. And it's our expect, what we're able to do is with that direction is we can get those amendments initiated before the planning commission in September, uh, get them, get their recommendation before the board in November, which could position the Board of County Commissioners to adopt by the end of the calendar year, which I think has been an ex, an expectation of the board, something that, that our staff has, has been very mindful of. The second, the second project, which as you heard this morning from two, two citizens about their, their interest and their support for the wildlife inventory is updating the mule deer winter range inventory. And I, I want to acknowledge that the Community Development Department and myself included have, have, and we, I anticipated that we'd be further along than where we are today. This is, uh, something that, that was certainly, was an expectation of ours, and not that this is being used as an excuse, it might be seen as one, but just for context for those that are listening and who have, who have, who are tracking this issue, um, the recommendation by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife is to, is to add a hundred and eighty-eight thousand acres, um, to our existing mule deer inventory. This affects, uh, thousands of lots in Deschutes County, and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife has recommended, uh, a number of conflicting uses that really impact, uh, mule deer as they're using this range in the winter. And the level of rigor that goes into this analysis, uh, justifying the inventory, how to develop development standards that are not only, uh, mindful of conservation, but other social and economic values that we have in our county, including property rights. It's a, it's an enormous project on a scale that I dare say hasn't happened in Oregon ever, or, uh, at least for several decades. Um, and so it requires us to do this process extremely well and carefully, and it's just taking us more time than we anticipated when we got into the minutia of state law and some of the rules that, that are, that we have to follow to, to, to bring a set of amendments out and initiate them formally. So that's why we're, we're, uh, tardy. Um, and the earliest that we could initiate these amendments, regardless of whether there's an interest in doing psilocybin, time, place, and manner amendments, or rural accessory dwelling units, is in October. Uh, the last thing I would offer is, um, that there's some tremendous public outreach that has to occur when you're talking about, you know, several thousand lots that are affected by a mule deer inventory. We, we have, we have planned, we want, we are committed to doing public outreach before the hearings. This would involve the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. So there's, the logistics involved in this are significant, and I'm, I, I just want the board and, and being mindful of the planning commission when you're, when you think about psilocybin, time, place, and manner amendments, uh, implementing Senate Bill three ninety-one, rural accessory dwelling units, and potentially, uh, deer winter range update, these are, these would be discreet meetings because I think there's going to be a lot of interest in all three of these topics. So I'm mindful of the bandwidth, not only of our staff, of course, but of the planning commission as well, especially if you have expectations that they provide recommendations to the board in a timely fashion so that the board's in a position to receive those recommendations this calendar year. So I've been talking a lot, I'll pause if you have any questions, and Tanya's here as well. Tanya would be in a position to lead the psilocybin, time, place, and manner amendments. She's also the lead planner who's been, uh, corralling the wildlife inventory, uh, process and coordinating with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. So I appreciate her being here as well, and if you have questions, she certainly can, can offer her perspectives too. So thank you for your time today, and, uh, our department wants to be responsive to the board's direction, so appreciate the, the opportunity to provide this overview.
Thank you, Peter. There's a, a lot going on, isn't there? You, you know, did we know that everything would converge at the same quarter or the same half of the year? And I know your staff has been, um, struggling at times with, you know, staffing. So it's, it seems like everything is hitting at once. It's actually outstanding news for the community to know that there's two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one, um, possible ADUs that could be built in rural Deschutes County. You're saying perhaps maybe, um, permits could get through later this year?
Madam Chair.
If we're lucky?
As soon as the amendments are adopted and acknowledged, there would be twenty-nine hundred eligible lots potentially that could apply immediately. And the way that we have set up the amendments, and we'll go into more specificity if this is the direction that we receive on August eighth to, you know, to describe how we've prepared the amendments, they would be, they're structured as a development action, so it would be, there's no discretion involved, they have to submit certain information. They have to submit certain information, and it's just there's clear and objective criteria. So if they meet that criteria, then, you know, they could essentially go right to building permit, building application for that rural accessory dwelling unit. So yes, it could, it could be forthcoming.
This is a side note, but how are we letting those 2,951 eligible lots know that they they could perhaps build an ADU legally?
It's a good question. I looked over my shoulder. I know it's not Whitney's responsibility longer. We will use, we will, you know, if a mail, we could do a mailing if that was important. I don't know if that's going to be effective. You know, off the cuff, I would say we would use our digital media coordinator, Eric, who we just hired. I would hope that the we'd get some tremendous media coverage. And I know that Central Oregon Builders Association, Central Oregon Realtors Association, we meet with them monthly. It's an agenda item every month. So I have, I have a feeling that the word will get out there rather quickly. So those are, you know, our our conventional tools that we could use to to let the community know that, under this scenario, that Deschutes County is initiating these amendments. There are hearings to take testimony. We would have a dedicated website that would be user friendly. So those, that's, I think that's, that's the starting point to get the word out to the community. Again, if this was the direction we received.
Well, shockingly, I did get a letter from the state, I believe it was last week, regarding my, our property's designation. So that letter came through from the state of Oregon last week for the fire. You know, if I'm in extreme or high risk that, so that was, that was actually good news. I was, because there are people in our community that are not on the internet. There are a few people, and it was nice to see that, okay, everyone is getting that letter. You know, I was telling my friends in Lapine, in that Burgess Road area, their designation, I think, is higher than what it was actually itemized originally. And so I said, you know what, you might want to go back to the state and just, you know, appeal it for that area. But more than that, I think it's good that the letter went out. I know that's another, that's another job, but maybe somebody else could handle that, just to let the people know. And then, just to remind you, I know there's some illegal ADUs, and they they would really like to be made legal. So hopefully, some of those in that almost 3,000 will be eligible for legality.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. The other thing is we, sorry, again, as you unpack all of this information, you'll notice in the memorandum that we identified how our existing code would relate to psilocybin. And so, you know, if you have questions about Table 1, we're happy to respond. Of course, there's some, there's an overview of leading up to that table describing where psilocybin production could occur, where manufacturing would occur, and how a similar use, under a similar use ruling, where a service center could occur. Again, if we took no action, and if the, I don't want to get ahead of the board, but if the board does decide next month, I think it's on August 8th, to to refer the psilocybin program to the voters. If if the voters were to overturn that, how our existing code would apply. I did reach out to county planning directors recently. If your, if your questions about what are other counties, how are other counties approaching psilocybin and TPM? There is no county, as of right now, that has formally initiated time, place, and manner amendments. Wasco County, Jackson County, possibly Hood River County are likely to be undertaking those amendments. But I think to the extent that that we do as well, we're all going to be kind of in the same calendar timeframe, you know, where amendments would be, would be initiated and and public hearings would occur in the fall. Let's see, I know Jackson County is, I think, today is conducting an ordinance considering an opt-out, but they are also, I think, subject to the dual task of developing time, place, and manner regulations as well. So anyway, that's, that's for your, for your perspective. And again, to the extent it helps inform whether time, place, and manner amendments are worth undertaking. You know, staff is here to answer those questions as they come up or any any comments you may have.
So currently, according to these existing code, Tara Bonn can have in a building not to exceed 4,000 square feet? That's just.
That's, that's would be under a similar use ruling. So, and I think, as I'm talking to Wasco County recently, their planning. I think you're going to, you're likely going to see, this is just my educated guess, you know, the, the, the existing county zoning codes really were never structured to anticipate a use like a service center, a retreat center that could have overnight accommodations. And so I think what you'd likely, what you may likely see from other counties, and again, we can come back and, as noted in the memorandum and the schedule on Table 2, we would come back on August 8th and give the board some options, and we'd be looking for a preferred alternative. And I don't want to get ahead of of the board right now. But what's, what I think, when talking to Wasco County and and Jackson County recently, you know, there are, there are places in the county and rural service centers and unincorporated communities where medical clinics or something like that is allowed. And that would be a logical fit under a similar use ruling because, you know, for therapeutic uses of of psilocybin, it could fit in that medical category. Now, whether or not it's allowed for overnight remains to be seen, and I don't want to speak for Wasco or or Jackson County. But that, that's an imperfect place for it. Whether the industry really wants to be in a unincorporated community or in a service center, excuse, in a rural service center, remains to be seen. But as the, as I think, most zoning codes, I think, are are similar to ours. And that will be the conversation, at least as a starting point for TPM, at least as one option, is you could allow them to be in these locations or, you know. And then, you know, conversations about overnight accommodations. Again, that's another alternative and one that our codes don't contemplate right now and would not allow on EFU. So again, we are prepared to come back on August 8th to give you different alternatives, I should say, different options that hopefully, in a, in a, in a robust conversation, the board would feel comfortable to give us enough direction. So that's where we stand today.
So Peter, I see all three of these projects as as urgent and important to the people of Deschutes County. And I, the idea of delaying any of them really is is pretty unappealing. So I've been trying to think about how, you know, you know, how we could possibly proceed with all three at the same time. I do want to ask about resources that we have to, you know, tap external capacity to be able to 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 support some of this work. My, my impression is that there are, we have had some cost savings at CDD because of vacancies, which, you know, is in part what our, what our problem is here. That, you know, we haven't had, we haven't had full staffing, so we haven't been able to do the, all of the work that we would have liked to have done. So, you know, that's one thing I want to ask about is, or, you know, whether an allocation of general fund dollars would allow CDD to find some of the external capacity that that we might need to proceed with some of this work. I know that we, I know we like to do our own work. I know that we are often the leaders, you know, on on so many land use issues. We are the leaders in figuring out how, how it's going to be implemented. And given our situation, I, I don't see us, I mean, given our situation and given that there are so many other communities that are dealing with the same issues, at least on rural ADUs and on psilocybin, time, place, and manner, I don't, I don't see us having to be the leaders on, on, on everything. And I, I'm wondering what opportunities there are to, you know, do, kind of like, team up projects? I mean, if there's all these, all these other counties that are, that are drafting time, place, and manner rules for psilocybin right now, you know, in the next few months, like, is there some way that we can, we can pool resources with them? You know, preferably, we would pull cash from our end, and they would, you know, we would find, you know, there would be, you know, contractors or, you know, we could, like, I'm, I'm, you know, those are, those are some excellent county colleagues to work on with something like this. I, I, I don't know if we've ever entered into partnerships where we, we are paying for other county staff to do, to do work that we want to see done. But just trying to be creative about how we can, you know, marshal the resources, you know, find economies or partnerships or external capacity to, so that we, we don't have to sacrifice one of these projects at this point. Because they are all critically important. I mean, you know, we desperately need the, the housing opportunities that are going to come out of Senate Bill 391. You know, I don't think that the voters of Deschutes County are going to choose to opt out on psilocybin access. And we have, you know, we've heard at a number of points in time how important the adoption of these wildlife overlays, inventories are for the people of our community who who care about wildlife and care about the rural character of our landscape. So I, yeah, those, those, you know, that's, that's where my mind is going on this, is how can we, how can we find the capacity or the efficiencies or the partnerships to be able to do it all?
And thank you for those questions or comments. And there's a lot to unpack there, and I'll, and I'll take it kind of one by one for the, for your consideration, and not in any, any one priority or order. We have, as noted in the memorandum, we have two associate long-range planners that are currently helping with with current planning. And we are still, we still have contract planners. These are former county employees as long-range planners who have, not as long-range planners, but as current planners, have left our organization. So we are, current planning is still reliant on, on additional assistance. One option the board could choose is for those administrative decisions that are not controversial or complex or have a matters, matters of first impression, we could just issue decisions, those decisions in 150 days. We could let, we could let them know that the board has priorities, and we're going to delay decisions to the fullest extent allowed by law. So that would, that has, that has ripple effects, but that is one approach. Not one I would recommend, but one that's out there. For psilocybin, time, place, and manner amendments, I think it's going to be important for the board to, you look at that Table 1, there's a lot of places where psilocybin could be grown beyond EFU, pretty much in every rural zone. And whether that is a use category that you would support or or be open to. And the reason why I ask that is, you know, if you do nothing, then you have a sense of where the code applies. You're not, we're not going to be able to rely on other jurisdictions, time, place, and manner amendments for psilocybin. They're not going to get adopted until December, November, December at the latest, right? And so we could certainly learn from their experience and develop TPM, our own TPM amendments, to the extent that the board wanted them in the winter of 2023. But as I look at where Dave Doyle would be sitting, you know, if, if time, place, and manner amendments are not adopted by January 2nd, our existing code applies, and someone could, could, you know, that's the rules that are in effect. And so someone in the psilocybin program could, could submit an application on January 2nd. Is that a bad thing? No, it's just that are, that those codes would be operational. Another approach would be, you know, under our legislative amendment procedures, our Planning Commission just has to review the text amendments. They don't have to hold a hearing. So they could review those amendments as directed by the board, presumably. And the board could hold a hearing later in the fall. I'm not, you know, you, you would want to weigh the opportunity cost of that. I think there's going to be a lot of testimony about psilocybin TPM. I think the, I've found over, over the years that the board benefits on controversial matters to have, to have the Planning Commission vet an issue, regardless of where the recommendation lies. I mean, you can have minority and majority opinions. I think those are helpful. It vets an issue, and then the Planning Commission grapples with it. Staff's nimble and and responsive, and then that whole process goes to the board, and the board is, learns from those conversations. But that's an option. You could, the board could just have one hearing. You could have it in November. And that would allow the wildlife inventory, potentially, to, to go forward in October. I worry about our staffing, but that's maybe a possibility. Again, it has, it has implications there. In terms of consultants and resources, I mean, Kristi Bollinger, your property manager, has acknowledged the challenges of retaining consultants to do, as I recall, you know, some of the work that's necessary for the neighborhood planning area. The, the consultants are maxed out as well. So I, and then there's the, the task of managing a consultant. They don't know our code, and so there's, there's no free lunch there as well. Our staff would, we'd have to do an RFP. We'd have to, you know, interview, and then we'd have to manage them. And truly, I think, when you go through those processes, even if there were consultants available, I'm not sure it creates additional capacity. So those are imperfect responses, Commissioner Chang, to excellent questions about how we could, you know, you know, is, is the juice worth the squeeze to try to find some additional capacity? I, I dare say, if I've covered all of those options, you know, delaying current planning decisions could free up Kyle and Kyle Collins and Tarek Rollins, who could presumably get plugged in to rural ADUs and the psilocybin TPM. I would think both of those would likely need to, would would not be well-served by, could not have a hearing with the Planning Commission. Again, I've already talked about the, the trade-offs of that to get both of those matters to the board for just one hearing in the, in late fall. And then that would, as I'm thinking out loud, allow staff to devote the Planning Commission's entire October for hearings, for hearings. Because I do anticipate the need for at least two public hearings for the mule deer winter range inventory update because there's thousands of property owners that are affected by it. People are going to be engaged, and they need to be engaged. And then September is used for open houses. So that might be where we would, we could make it work. Again, the winner, the deer winter range, even if we could squeeze this schedule, I don't see the Planning Commission making a recommendation until late in the fall. And given, I think, the level of interest, legitimate, genuine interest on both sides of, of, of the topic, those that are supportive of conservation, those that are being mindful of socioeconomic opportunities that that are, that need to be maintained and understood, I would want the board to have, you know, a dedicated time for a public hearing. And whether or not that's available in December, you know, that's, that's a question for the board. So I could see this item tipping into 2023. So I could see this item tipping into 2023. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but, um, if there was an expectation to have this board make a decision on, after going through a public hearing process and deliberating, I'm not sure you're, that's going to be, uh, just through the calendar is going to be feasible, given all the other hearings that you would be having, Senate Bill three ninety-one, uh, there's time, psilocybin time, place, and manner amendments, there's some other plan amendment zone changes that, uh, are out there that likely will be coming to the board, um, uh, you know, this, this late summer and this fall. Um, so I take a collective breath, there's, there's a lot on the, there's a lot headed, uh, uh, in the board's direction regardless of, of these legislative, um, uh, opportunities that I, I want to be mindful of. Some of them don't have a, have a shot clock, a hundred and fifty day requirement, but nonetheless, they're, they're in our queue. So hopefully that's helpful, um, to try to think outside the box, to try to squeeze all of our resources, but there are consequences in, in the public process, um, in, in our ability to, to, to devote resources to our current planning responsibilities. So thank you for, for that, for giving me the opportunity to kind of respond, I'm sure, imperfectly.
Yeah. I mean, and to, to pull up to the ninety thousand foot level, I, I mean, I, I will also say that I think part of the, the pickle that we find ourselves in right now does structurally go back to, um, the way that we fund the community development department. I, you know, I, I really, we have so many important long, long-range planning functions that are so, um, so many steps removed from a current application and a fee being paid for that work that I, I, I really feel like we need to think about, uh, creating other long-term, stable funding sources for long-range planning activities so we can build and protect the capacity within that function that we need to deal with, um, these really complex issues that a, a incredibly rapidly growing community has to deal with. Um, and, you know, say that to, you know, to my fellow commissioners right now, I, um, you know, just, just take rural ADUs, right? I mean, uh, getting that, getting that policy in place eventually is going to produce some, some applications and eventually is going to produce some, um, some fee revenue, um, to support staffing at CDD, but, I mean, that is so many years past the point, the time when we had to do the long-range planning work, um, to, to be able to have rural ADUs. It just doesn't make any sense. Um, so I, you know, I, you know, part of my frustration right now is, is tied back to those, you know, um, broader structural considerations that, where I think that, that the county is, is currently, we're just not well set up to get the long-range planning work done that we need to get done for our community right now.
Peter, I was just wondering, how many FTE are, um, unfilled right now in CDD?
We have three unfilled positions.
Three? Okay. So, and then you actually have employees that have left, but they're available as contract employees then, you were saying?
Correct.
A couple, how many of those?
We have two.
Okay.
Um, yes, we have two of those. Uh, I'm happy that, you know, they're former employees, Heather Ward and Zecharia Heck, um, when they're not doing their day jobs, uh, offer assistance and they do basic level applications, um, that don't have much complexity to them. So we've been relying on, on them. Um, uh, there was a third person that was participating that couldn't, couldn't make it work with their, their nine to five positions. You know, the, the other thing that, that I, I want to respect the comments about the commitment to long-range planning, our department, staff in our department, um, really valued the support that the board of county commissioners has offered to the department, to long-range planning, uh, over the years. Uh, it's not something that we take for granted. Uh, the work that we're initiating now, um, I mean, Nick will recall, ten years ago, we were involved in, it was a similar period where we were doing a number of high-profile projects. It feels very similar now. I mean, just to remind those that are listening at home, we've hired a consultant to do, to undertake a comprehensive plan update. I anticipate, uh, you know, the first kickoff meeting happening this fall, presumably in October. Um, this is a major project, uh, multi-year endeavor and we're very grateful that the board, uh, allocated resources to, to that effort. We've also, uh, received a transportation growth management grant that's allowing us to update the Tumalo community plan and Tumalo is going through significant changes. Yesterday, there was a, uh, a meeting talking about the sewer master plan for Tumalo. Um, there's also a, another related aspect to the Tumalo, excuse me, to the transportation growth management grant related to the Sisters Country Trails. So we, our team is actively involved managing those projects. They have consultants, the Tumalo plan has a transportation element to it. Um, you know, and so you factor in some of the projects that I, we've highlighted today just as part of this memorandum and our, our team is at the forefront of, uh, statewide of many of these issues. And when it comes to wildlife inventories or psilocybin, time, place, and manner amendments potentially, or Senate Bill three ninety-one, I mean, I, I hear it regularly and, and I, I treat it as a compliment, but sometimes it stings where I have county planning directors saying, we're just going to wait until you guys finish and then we're just going to utilize your amendment process and your experience. So, you, you know, and some of that is due to their own resources, their own bandwidth, but I think the compliment there is that we have a tendency to deliver, um, and, and we go through robust public processes. So as much as I would love to be able to turn to Tanya and say, would you just follow county X, they've done this wildlife inventory, it's very straightforward, there's a template there, plug and play. We, we don't have that opportunity and we don't really have that opportunity in other projects that, that I've highlighted. So we, we embrace this opportunity. It's what I think gets our planners up in the morning, um, and, you know, so, so kudos to them and our entire team, but as Nick knows, we're, we are at the forefront of our profession and, and grateful for that opportunity, but it often leads us as the, the trailblazer, unfortunately.
So, Commissioner, if I just, so, to going back to one of your concepts, Peter, was if the planning commission just reviewed but didn't conduct a public hearing, effectively the schedule that I'm looking at that we all have before us would basically be to replace the planning commission with the board?
Correct. I mean, you still have to have, you still have to have a, the planning commission has to review it, though.
But they only have one meeting. I mean, that, that, we've done before.
Correct.
Where that can happen within thirty-five day notice, which is.
That's correct.
In effect, if that's what the board's direction was, the board, um, could have a work session as early as sometime in early September, public hearing in late September, deliberations and first reading sometime in October. And I'll just say, one of the benefits of the board potentially acting earlier is that the voters then know what they're voting on. Now, granted, the ballots are going to go out sometime in mid-October, mid to late October, so it, it's a movie, and it may only be first reading, but I'm just trying to think, is there a way to, to complete that? If, if that's an option that the board even wants to consider. Um, and again, it's, it, it's, something would, would still need to be postponed, but wouldn't be postponed for as long as if, as if the board effectively certain that capacity. And then you have one planning commission review on this, you know, at one of the two meetings.
Correct.
And it's just, it's very simple. So that's just one potential variation. I mean, just putting what your suggestion was into the, into the calendar, into the schedule that you suggested, that, that's how it might look for the board if the board might be interested.
Correct. I, I mean, our, our staff will, I say this thinking out loud and Tanya may be giving non-verbal cues or, you know, that I'm picking up.
He's smiling, yes.
Smiling, okay, because there's, you know, to, to initiate the amendments, you still have to write the findings, you still have to go through a public process. What it does is it opens up the calendar. I still, I mean, if you directed us to do that, we would do everything we could to, to, to try to have the, um, try to initiate the, the winter range in October, late October. Um, it's, it's a lot for our team. It's, it's, because you, like I said, it, you, you pull out one of the evidentiary hearings, you still have, we still have to convene the planning commission, we still have to debrief the board, you're going to want work sessions. Um, so there's, can we do it? We would be incredibly stretched, um, but if, if that's the direction you, you want to give us, we'll do everything we can to make it work. I, 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 I offer the observation that, that I think Senate Bill three ninety-one and I think psilocybin TPM are going to generate significant interest. I mean, Central Oregon Land Watch campaigned in two thousand twenty-one against it and that doesn't mean that the board can't hold a, a large hearing, you've done it in the past, but you may want, you may want to utilize that, that hearing for psilocybin TPM as well as for rural accessory dwelling units to hear what the community is saying and allow a planning commission to respond and, and make recommendations. It doesn't mean that you necessarily need them, but I've seen, you know, complex, controver, complex projects, whether they're controversial is, remains to be seen, but I've seen complex projects benefit by having, uh, the planning commission hold a hearing. But we can, if, if the board wants to, to maximize the schedule, as, as Nick noted, um, we would do everything to make that happen.
So I'm not so panicked about this. Uh, I mean, I just see, let's be businesslike. Uh, I support doing, uh, time, place, and manner psilocybin discussion in a businesslike fashion. Uh, we're going to have input from the state, uh, and it will have an informed electorate making a decision in November. Uh, so whenever we do that, let's, let's do that. So then one of the questions I would have is, um, are we, is there a way to kind of prep this and not really do? So, uh, I'm making this up, I'm not fly here, but the state DLCD and the Psilocybin Advisory Committee is just putting their, their committee work together for land use. Uh, is there a way to come up with a body of knowledge and not really go through the whole DLCD acknowledgement, plan amendment notice? You know, not the official process, but, you know, document it, you know, like make the, the pamphlet of the facts as we know it so people can vote informed and then start the process afterwards. Um, you know, and I don't know what that looks like with the, you know, the, the way the people voted and, you know, January, first business day of January or, or is there going to be another? Because maybe there's a window in there where we can say, hey, you know, we haven't done our, we, we know we're going to want to do some TPM. Uh, we know it's the first week of January, but we need another, you know, hundred days or whatever, a hundred and fifty days to go do this work. I mean, maybe there's a huge opportunity out there we don't even know about. And I just made that up as I was saying it, but it brought about three thoughts together and now it sounds.
That is a question that came up for me after, after our hearings. I mean, the state's not going to start accepting applications until January, whatever, and it didn't sound like the state was in a position to crank through those applications really fast. Um, I, it, it, it sounded like there was going to be a substantial amount of time processing, you know, processing before anyone got any, any green light to, you know, to, to, to move ahead. So there, there's, there's part of me that wonders, you know, whether we have time to just do the TPM for psilocybin after, you know, after the voters have, have spoken in November.
Makes the most sense, honestly.
I mean, it is, it is true that, that, um, having draft TPM rules at the point where people are about to cast their ballots, you know, could, could inform their, their decision on that, on that question, uh, to some degree. Uh, but I, I mean, am I, am I missing something? Is that, is that, would that be the primary reason to try to do the TPM, draft TPM rules quickly is so that, um, it can, it, it speaks to the ballot measure?
The primary reason to, to perform the TPM amendments, if the voters overturn the opt-out, if the board, the board refers the matter to the voters. The primary reason to do TPM is that you could get regulations in place before OHA accepts applications. You're not wrong, it may take them months to process an application, but someone can still apply. And so if you're comfortable.
It's the land use compatibility.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So if you recognize that someone could apply for production or manufacturing or a similar use ruling based on what we've outlined in Table One, effective January second, then that's, then you're willing to accept that. And there's, I'm not saying that there's any negative connotation to that. That's just what, how our code is structured as we understand it today. But TPM with a, you, you could, you could have, the, the board, this board could be, find themselves in a position to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner amendments. If, if the voters overturn it and you find that having those amendments are worthwhile in light of how you, how the audit of the code looks, then you would have it in place. It doesn't say no to the industry, it says this is where it's going to occur in a reasonable manner and it doesn't mean that the amendments can't be modified over time. Um, I will say that there, if you wait until the opt, opt-out, if you wait until the general election, there will not be enough time, I don't think, to get this matter to the board by the end of the calendar. I mean, we, you would be devoting every reasonable meeting of November and December with very little extensions of public comment period. So it's not something we would recommend.
Just, and I'll just jump in. So Peter, the key is the goalpost rule. Um, people play by the rules, they apply based on the rules that are in effect at the time. So it's not a matter of when OHA accept, accepts applications, it's the date at which they apply to our community development department for their application for one of these. So that's, that's the table that Peter's laid out. Those are the rules that they have, if somebody, now granted, somebody's going to have to be working on their application in December and have a complete application submitted by whatever the first day is.
You're talking about like January second.
And are they, I mean, and, and so OHA will start accepting applications in early January. Are we required to start accepting land use applications in early?
That's my understanding, the answer is yes, because Measure one or not, one oh nine is written that local governments are opted in. You have the ability to refer the matter to the voters in a general election period or, and/or you can develop, local governments can develop reasonable time, place, and manner amendments.
So I was, yeah, I was trying to say, can we put the goalposts up a hundred and fifty days after January? That's kind of, yeah. So if we don't have them up, we don't have them up and we can't write a Lux was a fanciful scenario I was trying to come up with, but we're thinking we don't have that opportunity.
Correct. The rules, if, if the board does nothing, these rules are in place on, as highlighted on Table One, and one could apply on January second for production in any one of those zones that acknowledges where production, where farm use or agricultural use is allowed. And if they want to do manufacturing, you know, there's areas, you know, and there's some question about production and manufacturing, are those, are those the same? I don't think they are in many respects. I think it's important for local governments to be somewhat conservative, but you can see where manufacturing is allowed. And then the last part is of course, the psilocybin service centers, how one could apply for similar use ruling.
So a couple of thoughts. From my experience, psilocybin production is a small format indoor controlled environment production. Uh, it, it doesn't look like it's a shocking, uh, development of, of activity out in the open with, with impacts to the neighbors per se, just, you know, a dark garage. And I was just going to make the wisecrack remark and I don't know the facts, but processing is probably drying them and putting them in a package. So I mean, I, and I, I'm serious about, I think it's as simple as that, you know, weighing and understanding, testing and, and, you know, potency or whatever, but other than that, it's drying it and putting it in a package. So neither one of those seem to be that impactful.
I mean, we heard from, we heard from Ryan Reed, you know, who's, you know, doing business planning around a facility that could meet.
Yep.
The majority of the demand for a community of two hundred thousand people in a five hundred square foot production facility.
So then.
We already had the production facilities way bigger than that per the sheriff's memo. So what's, what's really going to happen?
Oh, I'm just saying, yeah, it's still small scale.
What happens in the black market is what happens in the black market and what happens in a, in a licensed, regulated, uh, inspected facility is something different.
Yeah, that's two different paths.
The service centers, all of the four, um, items listed here all say medical clinic for the service centers.
There's one that's a medical center, yeah, medical center or medical clinic, some have limitations. have limitations. They'd be, they'd be subject to conditional use requirements. That's correct. And site plan.
And then what about those medical clinics are now allowed to have an overnight stay, correct?
I, I, I don't think medical clinics are structured for overnight stays. It's a totally different building permit review process. I don't think we have any medical clinics off the top of my head. I may, I may be incorrect. This is, this code is, is, as it pertains to our unincorporated communities and rural service centers is somewhat antiquated. Our code certainly doesn't contemplate psilocybin service centers with overnight accommodations. I, I would echo Commissioner DeBones' remarks that production and processing on the surface seem, don't seem to gen, likely won't generate compatibility issues. I mean, we may find over time that the conversion of psilocybin to an edible form, people want it in a certain form, and then it requires some processing. But I think it's, you know, there's also, you know, you know, again, there's a, pretty much every rural zone in Deschutes County allows farm use or agricultural use. So, you know, to, to the extent that the board has, you know, is mindful of where that, that should occur. I mean, it's allowed outright under EFU, you know, conservatively. I don't think you could preclude it from EFU zoning. But it's, it's really the service centers that I think are, are going to potentially generate the most impact from a land use standpoint. I don't mean that negatively in terms of what psilocybin facilitators and patients, you know, what that means in terms of, of, of experiencing psilocybin. It's, we don't know what overnight accommodations represent. We don't know what food providers represents. We don't know how the accommodate, overnight accommodations can be accommoded, how they'll be structured. Right now, our code won't allow it in EFU.
Right.
Because we don't have a comparable use that has overnights, and that's per state law.
And so rural residential zoning, MUA 10 zoning, and EFU and Forest. So, I mean, there's no path for those at all?
There's a path, there is a path today.
Or service centers.
Not today.
Could that be created in this process? As in, somebody's, there were some visions during our public hearing about, oh, it's going to be this rural retreat center on a large acreage, you know, hiking in the woods.
What, what we would like to do, I mean, I'm happy to get into some of the details if you would like, but I think to the extent that-
Yeah.
-the board wants time, place, and manner amendments, our team is positioned to come back in two weeks to, to give you alternatives.
Yep. Well, so just, yeah, real quick for the clarity then. So I mean, there's four, four service center areas where it's like uses or whatever the terminology was.
Correct. For medical-
Would that be expanded? Could, to other areas?
Could it be expanded through time, place, and manner amendments? Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, so that's fine. That's what I need to know. So I'm supportive of doing something with time, place, and manner. As I say, setting up the goalposts. Thanks, Nick, for bringing it back to the high level. Setting up the goalposts is, is the plan here. We can't delay it past January, first business day of January. The voters are going to have a choice. We're going to do some work, which may, may not even be a needed, depending on the, the people's choice there. But I support putting psilocybin TPM effort in place. I would lean towards, you know, just queuing up mule deer winter range right after that. I mean, it's just, you know, it sounds like it's a big controversial thing, but it, these are the facts. These are the resources we have. We have to do it locally. The state puts in, like for, for accessory dwelling units. There is no way for Deschutes County to put a lot of effort in, you know, long-term planning because we needed to wait for the state legislature to even put that opportunity on the, on the table. So now that it's there, we can respond to it. So that's just the way our system is set up. I support, you know, getting to the rural accessory dwelling units, you know, as it's evolving, because that's been our commitment for quite a while, and queuing up the winter deer range right after TPM.
And if I may, Madam Chair, just, just for context, and I don't want to get ahead of the board, we will, when we talk about time, place, and manner amendments, we're going to have to be mindful. We're going to get, we would provide the board with options, which you've heard me say several times this morning. But the moment you start adding uses to the code, it gets complicated. And what do I mean by that? We have Goal 5 inventories, existing Goal 5 inventories on the books today. This would potentially be a new conflicting use if you allow service centers in areas where there's a wildlife inventory. And then there's Goal 12 and the transportation planning rule. And so we will talk about the specifics and details, and I dare say some of the limitations as we go through a, under, under this approach, if the board directs us to do TPM on August 8th, we'll come back and say, here's a very conservative approach based on the timeline and the schedule and our understanding of the rules. Here's a modest approach. And then here's one that's much more liberal, and, and that liberal one may have limitations because of the requirements to comply with not only our comprehensive plan when you amend codes, but, but state, state planning goals and various rules. So when you, I'm not even sure the, so I'm sure there's industry representatives right now that are listening, and they're not thinking about the transportation planning rule. When you're thinking about overnight accommodations, vehicle trips, patients, employees, others, other, other supplemental staff and whatnot, there's an analysis that goes along with that. And not to get ahead of it, but we will come back and acknowledge, you know, whether it's even possible to, for TPM right now to address this opportunity. It's not to say that it couldn't happen in the future. It's just that for anybody who's listening, Deschutes County and local governments did not, we weren't the ones that procrastinated on psilocybin. The Oregon Health Authority got a late start to the rulemaking. We only found out about the rulemaking this spring. We won't know about the rulemaking as terms of the operational characteristics of service centers until this fall. And so the, the other counties that I talked about today, Jackson, Hood, and Wasco, they're, we're all in the same boat, relatively speaking, again, if the board directs us to do this. There's not a lot of time to have, there's no time to convene an advisory committee or a working group to understand the needs of the industry, to understand the various impacts. And so under TPM right now, and I, I'm probably the one that's letting everyone know who's interested in this industry that they, they may need to prepare themselves, and I'm not speaking for the other counties, that they're going to take a conservative approach because there's not a lot of time to build the amendments and do the level of analysis if there was a more sweeping approach to allow service centers in rural zones because of, of the timeframe for when OHA is going to start accepting applications. So that's not a criticism of local government. That's not a criticism met on Oregon Health Authority. That's just where we are in the clock as it was dictated by Measure 109. So Commissioner DeBones, I just wanted to put that out there that when I said, yes, is there a way that service centers could be expanded outside? There is potentially. I want to give that caveat.
There'll be people asking. I mean, you know, as soon as you have the discussion, it's like, okay, well, how about, how can we add it to this zone or this zone as a conditional use with whatever? So I, that's going to be part of the-
These are all, this is not something that Deschutes County baked up. This is all dictated by state law.
So the rural service centers-
Don't forget that the fact that they didn't, they actually postponed meetings, and then they postponed it again. And now that's why we're looking at it, and it's, and you're saying you're going to come back on the 8th, and you, you can have a conservative plan, a modest plan, and then something even more, but that's going to have more unintended consequences that are going to be more impactful.
Yeah, the way I envision, as, as Tanya is absorbing all this, because she would be the one leading it, is I can see us outlining the, 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 the various options, and there would be a comment, there will be a matrix.
Right.
And as the board has experienced-
We love our matrix.
-there'll be a comment box. And the comment boxes will talk about, I'm not going to say pros and cons, but strengths or weaknesses of each approach in relationship to the, the schedule and state law and other factors. And what we would need on August 8th, or presumably we could come back two days later under other items if the board wanted more time, but we will need rather quickly that direction from the board about which alternative you want just to start the public process. And that's critical. We're not saying that this is what the board is ultimately going to adopt under this scenario, but what would be, what would be prudent to initiate a formal amendment process to. So that's what we want to do in two weeks after the fair. And as I mentioned, to the extent that rural accessory dwelling units are a priority for, again, because it's something we could implement this calendar year, we will come back and a staff member will come back and articulate what the amendments are, how they're structured, a schedule, and how psilocybin and Senate Bill 391 in separate memorandums would work their way through the system, starting with the planning commission.
So what are the things that will be, and not for now. Not at all for now. But this is where legal is going to be important, or planning directors is. So what does reasonable mean with these? And I'm not, again, not asking now, but with, with marijuana, it, it had a specific meaning under farm use. So just so the board's aware of what the parameters are. I mean, if the board says, look, we're only going to allow it in this one zone with this one acreage, is that fine? Or is it, look, there's a reasonableness factor that we need to think about. We, and again, so that'll just be helpful to inform the board as they go through the matrix of just how broad is their discretionary authority in, in drafting the initial ordinance?
Great. Thank you, Nick.
So I asked the question, you know, what is the urgency with the psilocybin TPM draft rules? And I, I wanted, I just asked this, the, the same question about these other two initiatives. Early on in the process, we discussed how rural ADUs were waiting for Senate Bill 762, you know? And where are we at with that now? I, I mean, are we, are, are rural ADUs waiting until those maps are, are finalized, which is still some months off? Or are we wait, are rural ADUs waiting even longer than that? And if so, then, I mean, there's, there's part of me that just wants to ask, well, why, why do we have to, uh, why do we have to do a whole lot of work on, on, on rural ADU regulations right now as opposed to waiting a few months? And then, you know, same thing for the wildlife inventory. I mean, you know, clearly, we have postponed and postponed the wildlife inventories. So there's at least the perception among some that, that it's not so urgent. But what would be the arguments for, you know, why, why the wildlife inventories are urgent to proceed with sooner than later?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Jiang. I think the question to your, to your first, first comment pertaining to Senate Bill 391 is, my understanding is, is the, to the extent that, so Senate Bill 762, as, as Chair Adair noted, those that were, that are affected by that legislation recently received a notice from the Oregon Department of Forestry. They're in the high to extreme risk classifications. To the extent that the map is amended or, or finalized, it's, it's going to take properties, it's going to, it's going to reduce the risk classifications from, to, from high to extreme to a lower classification. So to the extent that the board is contemplating Senate Bill 391, as I mentioned at the, at the forefront of my overview of today's agenda item, is there's, there's 2,900 lots today that are not affected by Senate Bill 762. And the question for the board is, you know, is it worth initiating the amendments now to get them in place this calendar year and acknowledged so that in early 2023, those properties, you know, those property owners can apply and begin coordinating with, with CDD on such issues as onsite wastewater and, and build, and, you know, what, you know, building codes or designs. Could, could the board wait? Sure. There's no, there's no mandate.
The 2,900 that are not currently within extreme or high risk, there's nothing that's holding those back at this point.
Correct. That's a gross number. Some of those lots do not have a single family dwelling, but they are eligible based on size and zoning, meaning a minimum of two acres. So, yeah. And then in terms of, of the, the deer winter range, you know, the, you know, while there may be a perception that, that the county has slow-walked this program, I want to just acknowledge that, that our staff has been diligent about preparing amendments and the justification for this inventory update that is reflective not only of conservation, but as it pertains to socioeconomic values and property rights. There are over 19 conflicting uses that have to be evaluated through Goal 5, which what's called economic, social, environmental, and energy consequences, whether you're going to limit, prohibit, or allow outright. No local government, in my knowledge, has gone through an analysis like this where there's over 19 conflicting uses. It doesn't mean that it's, that it's, I'm hopeful that what we produce ultimately is modest and, and reflective of our community's values. But it's, it's complicated, and it's just taken us much longer than we anticipated. And we, we couldn't, and we, we didn't know until we got into the rules and got, received Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife's rec, you know, recommendations, and we took it through, you know, our analysis. And, and so the other, the other piece to that, as you've heard me say, is, you know, a robust public process matters. And, and so, you know, whether it occurs in October, or that would be the first evidentiary hearing, potentially, or whether it occurs in late January, early February, if the board is committed to this program, we're talking about a, a few month delay after, after the, the holidays. And so I appreciate while some constituents believe it's, it's been, it's not a priority. I can, I can, I can share with you that it is, and our staff is geared to thinking about such things as public process, public notice, and ample opportunities for public engagement. And that's just where we've landed.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would say that, you know, that, you know, under, under, under duress of public pressure, this Board of Commissioners did decide at the end of September 2021 that we were going to proceed with at least the mule deer winter range inventory. And it has been, it's been a long time. I, you know, I, I, and I very much appreciate the work that CDD has been doing under, you know, with significant capacity constraints, you know, on a, on a very ambitious, complex project. But I don't, you know, from the dais here, I mean, when there are, when there are things in the CDD work plan that are priorities for us, we are poking and prodding you about them all the time. And the wildlife inventories have not, you know, they're, we have not been doing the poking and prodding that I think the, the community expects on this project. So, you know, I'll, you know, I, I, I'm just, I, I want to put the ownership for the slow-walking where it belongs, and I think that it belongs here on the dais.
Well, I can say that if, if we engaged with ODFW in September of last year, and the fact that we are now getting that plan, that's pretty amazing. I actually was trying to get, when you think about the state and how fast things happen, and the fact that they just closed Redmond's DMV, I mean, it's a different department, but it's from our state. They closed Redmond. We were asking for greater hours in Lapine. That's not happening. They closed Hermiston. You know, I, I think-
The state delivered the analysis and their requests before September 2021. The, the work at this point is on our end, and the fact that the work-
The state delivered the results last September? Is that what you just said?
The data, yes. The state delivered all the data for us to proceed with this wildfo, wildlife inventory update.
Last September.
Last September.
Tanya, will you confirm that with, for me? Hi. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
So there's a few things. There's a few pieces. Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I think what you're referring to is, yeah, the initial data that was done from Phase 1, which was kind of that first wave of public outreach when we were still talking about- about three different, you know, the mule deer, the sensitive birds.
Making a decision.
We had our interagency working group, working with ODFW and our consultant to kind of define this potential new boundary for each of those things, each of those inventories, not things, inventories. And that data absolutely was ready for us. The next wave of input from ODFW came from conversations we had with them kind of over the subsequent year of what the conflicting uses would be. And that was a combination of existing ones we have in the code already, I believe there's nine, plus a few more that had appeared in a 2009 interagency report, as well as kind of a few that they added in just subsequent conversations based on their expertise. So, yeah, absolutely, the boundaries of a proposed new inventory have been kind of proposed by them for a while. And we've been having those, moving those conversations forward with trying to figure out those conflicting uses. And then we've been working our tails off to work, to create these findings documents that Peter has explained so well. So the potential amendments, as well as the findings, going through this conflicting use analysis.
The 19, as Peter mentioned, which.
Might even be 20 at this point.
There's 19 and there's some that we were obligated to identify that we thought were conflicting because if we didn't address them, it would be brought up in the public process. So it's a belt and suspenders approach that reflects Deschutes County, not in 1990 when our first inventory was acknowledged, adopted and acknowledged, but in 2022. So it's, it's a robust analysis and when we bring it forward, when you're ready for it, I think you'll have a better understanding of why it took us so long to build the justification and to build the amendments.
And I just want to emphasize that the recommended conflicting uses from the state, those were in our September 23rd, 2021 memo on this. So we are not, we are not waiting for the state to proceed with the wildlife inventories. It is, the work is on our end to proceed. And the fact that it has taken this long is our responsibility.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
So staff is looking for direction.
Clear, clear direction from a board of three.
All right. Well, clear direction. Do we need a motion on clear direction or just like overall, if you can come back November, the August 8th with, you know, I've heard from a lot of the community regarding the wildlife, you know, we have the psilocybin and it seems like, you know, I hate to do that to you, but we do need to look at the time, place, and manner. And, you know, when we see what is existing, if those rules would, if we would have like 10 people apply January 1st, they would, they would go under those rules. So we probably do need to look at those at the same time. And, you know, and then, of course, there's the ADU issue and 2,961 possible units going in to workforce housing sooner rather than later for people like the Sunshine Homes. I think that's important. So I don't know, Peter, how you can do it, but we've got a lot of important things. It seems like you can perhaps maybe balance it. And then, as Commissioner DeBon said, do the wildlife, what, in November?
We would, we would come back with the, my, the approach that I would recommend is if the majority of the board supports us initiating rural ADU implementation and psilocybin, time, place, and manner amendments, we'll come back on August 8th with an update on both to provide greater context. I would plan on having our team, Tanya, come back the week of January 9th of 2023 with a schedule of the public open houses, with a tentative schedule of the public open houses, a tentative schedule of the public hearings, an overview of the amendments, and, you know, and how we addressed, you know, these conflicting uses so that during that, during that meeting, the board could, with that update, could direct us to formally formally initiate the mule deer wildlife inventory.
Okay. You're saying on January 9th of 2023?
The week of January 9th, which is the first full week of the new year. Again, presuming that's, the board's meeting that week, we will get to you at the first regular meeting to give you this commission, this update, and with a schedule and the direction to proceed.
Well, that may end up being the will of the majority of the board, but I want to express my opposition to delaying, further delaying the wildlife inventory update.
So I can formalize it with a motion if we think we should? I don't know how.
Do we need a motion? No?
I mean, it's helpful to have, whatever the.
Yeah, so I'll use some words and we'll, yeah, because it may be two to one, just so we can kind of acknowledge. So I move that we proceed with psilocybin, time, place, and manner regulations and delaying the mule deer winter inventory range project following that. And then supporting our ADUs.
With January 9th, do we need to date it or not?
I'd just like, yeah, just acknowledging, supporting TPM, mule deer to follow, and our ADUs proceeding also.
Okay, so you're saying rural ADUs and psilocybin TPM, and then mule deer will follow? Okay. Is there a second to the motion? So the chair will second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the chair will choose.
So thank you for the whole group, this is, and the community. So, I mean, this is it. Psilocybin discussion's going to happen. We want the people that are advocates to be at the table. What's, you know, what's the vision for what we can do with the current zoning we have and within the system we have? So hopefully this is going to be a real informative process for the vote of the people in November.
Yes.
Flagging for communications perspective that we need to do a correction to our most recent update that we sent out to the whole community that said we are proceeding with the wildlife inventory now.
Oh, I'm sure we just made news by doing what we did. So, I mean, are you asking for press release or what?
We just put it in our news update to the entire community, our news update. So.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I wouldn't want people to think that we, you know, we're trying to take credit for doing something that we're not.
Got it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Tanya, for meeting with me last Friday at 3:00. Appreciate all your efforts. I know it's.
Just one quick note, we do have a website and our internal mailing list for the projects, so we will keep everybody apprised on that level, the stuff that we can touch.
For the psilocybin TPM process?
Uh, no, for the mule deer.
Okay, so people that are interested in the mule deer, there's already a list. Okay, good.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, are there any other items?
Commissioners, the one item that we have, and Whitney, do you have the copy of the, we have the lobbyist interviews at 1:30. We don't need to spend a lot of time on this, but we have.
They are today.
Just questions and just a basic format, basic structure for how to conduct the interviews.
It wasn't on my schedule, so I went, I went like, oh, I must have been misinformed.
If this, if this structure or format is helpful, we'll proceed. Basically, it's questions, and it's modeled after the RFP and then the draft with the board a couple of days ago. So this just gives you, if, if we, we do have one executive session, but if we have any changes between now and about 1:15, we can, we can make those changes. Sorry, Whitney, I probably just said everything you were going to.
Oh, it's great. What next? And we do anticipate that we'll have representatives from all firms attending in person today.
Great. I'm supportive of this format.
Okay.
This will be real publicly available information after it's done, correct?
It will be. We're going to be live on Zoom with those details posted online and recording and posting that recording after the fact to the website, so. I would just flag.
So you'll be getting this back, this form by 3:00, correct? Three copies?
I have copies already run, but we can definitely run them again if there's any modifications. A few commissioners included proposed questions for each firm in their scoring sheets, and those questions have been captured on the last page of this document. So just, there are some firm-specific questions there for consideration.
Oh, okay. It's on your, the ones you have, not here. Okay, great.
One possible addition to the first question, definitely want to understand people's connections, relationships with both parties, both chambers. It does seem like some of the entities we're going to be interviewing have deeper relationships with certain committees within the different chambers. And I'm wondering if it would be useful to ask them, you know, ask them that as well.
That's great, yeah.
And I'm supportive of that. My experience is, you know, once we kind of go through the first interview, if somebody, something very tangible comes up like that, basically just take a note and ask all three of them, you know. So as I say, even if it's evolved real time, just to try to get a common set of information from everybody.
Can I just ask, what is the air conditioning set on in this room? Did you guys not hear the news? They said to move it up a little bit. No, it just seems like it's chilly for me.
You can do an override. Thank you, Eric.
I mean, I'm listening to somewhere and they're saying that you need to have it at 78 if you're home. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, that sounds pretty hot, but. It's at 74 now? Oh, what was it at, like 72? Okay, thank you, Eric. I just thought, it's just getting colder. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to Commissioner Chang's comment, because you haven't had a chance to review this yet, we did attempt to address the key committee legislators and their staff at the top of Page 2 in that first column, but maybe that's not the right place, but we were thinking about the same.
That's, that's great.
Same option as well.
That's a fine place to put it.
How important that is.
Thank you.
So I think staff's plan is to provide copies of these for the board's consideration, but as Nick said, you're obviously not, it's not that we need to go from top to bottom through these questions, it's more a framework for you if you want to use it, with certainly the opportunity to add specific questions that you may have or questions that may not fall within the matrix. It's mostly just providing you these if they're helpful as we move through the interviews this afternoon.
And we're going next door, correct?
We are going to be in Deerment.
Okay, good. That's, that's good to hear.
Okay, well, we'll plan to have copies of this available this afternoon, and I think if the board's able, I think Nick and I were thinking that maybe if we were able to meet about 1:15, that might help us get settled before we have our first firm arrive.
Great.
I'll be there.
1:15, on time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
And then Commissioners, we do have one executive session, which.
Okay, so we need to leave and go to executive, please, Stephanie?